On order.
I know.
Board of Selectment meeting September ninth at six oh three P M. And let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so a lot of people here tonight. Um, just wanna clarify a few things. We have two public hearings and each of the public hearings has kind of two topics. Um, and then after that, we will have regular public audience. Um, what I would like, you know, for a public hearing, you have three minutes and we will time you. Um, I would like you to say, well, I'm gonna do the first one first, I've realized, sorry, sorry. Um, so I'm gonna open and close a public hearing and then we'll open and potentially close the second public hearing. So make sure that you speak to the topic that you're here for, okay? And then public audience will be later. Um, we had a sign in sheet which just said public audience, but I'm assuming people that are here for the public hearing also signed that too. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with that. Um, but the first thing I'm gonna do is um ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the town code, chapter one forty-one, taxation related to farm machinery and farm buildings.
So move.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, so the the first public hearing is now open. Do I have a list of sheep? Oh. Okay, so. Can't really say who's here for what. I see, so I guess I'll start with the first name on here. Joan Coe, are you here for the public hearing on the farm machinery?
Yeah, I forgive the public hearing.
Okay. Three minutes if you could remember.
Joan Coe, twenty-six Wycombe Drive, a taxpayer I am concerned when the taxing authority picks selected groups to incentivize. All reductions in taxes given to one group adds taxes to another ta- to other taxpayers. All tax incentives and abasements should be accompanied with an equal reduction in the budget. All tax incentives should be income based on household and business income, not only income from the farm, but assets on the property. Horses should be taxed if they are generating income to houses and businesses as personal property. All people asking to be incentivized should submit a tax return showing their gross yearly income and assets. Gentlemen farms and commercial fi- uh fina- uh financial groups should be admitted for exemptions. Many taxpayers in town are not incentivized with assets of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Why is two hundred fifty thousand dollars a magic number? Incentivizing a family farm is a benefit to the community. Can the town supply what the lost revenues would be if these incentives were enacted? Why should a moderate income taxpayer pay more while the town is incentivizing a gentleman farmer? These proposals should be rewritten to incentivize the needy family farmer, not the gentleman farmer or business that can pay their way. It appears that rich lobbyists are once again writing laws that give incentive to the rich at the expense of the moderate income taxpayer and this proposal should be rejected as written in all my comments we posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Um, as I've Stephen Taylor, if you're here for the first public hearing, I guess I'll just ask who's here for the first public hearing? Okay, um, Don?
Don Teller, Tom Meadow Farm, two sixty-one Farms Village Road. I I just wanna thank the board for the and the staff for the effort that went into bringing this to a public hearing. And while I did speak in favor of higher limits than that, I really do appreciate and say this is a good start and um and urge you to support it and and to say thank you. It will help. I I try to be a gentleman at all times. I don't think of myself as a gentleman farmer.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, other people here for public hearing number one?
Devon Christensen, Flammick Farm, forty-four West Mountain Road. Uh, again, I s- mimic Don's words, thank you for taking this into consideration. Farms are a lot of work and they're evolving and need to evolve to survive. You don't see someone just growing zucchini and carrots anymore and surviving. We have to expand into other things. My expansion, as I learned that I was just losing money every year being a real farmer, evolved, I'll tell the story, I was at, I we get three minutes, right? At ballet class, my daughter's ballet class and I'm knowing I'm losing money growing food, I'm not growing vegetables next year, I have no idea what I'll be doing next summer. Two moms are talking and I'm eavesdropping and one says, "Well, where are you sending your kids to camp next summer?" And it was the light bulb went on, "Camp? I could do a camp." So we evolved into a farm camp that now brings in eighty-five kids a week, waiting list like crazy. Beautiful stuff. And I think farms are going to evolve. We have some manufacturing ice cream, we have, you know, just various things that aren't as such farming operations the way they used to be years ago. So farms will be evolving, they need to evolve to exist. One of the things you may consider that I foresee in the future, I just uh contacted a group called Farm-Based Education Network. And growing up on a farm, you have to learn common sense, the skills in every aspect of life are amazing to learn. And I see farm-based education as coming along strong. So as you consider, as we evolve, wherever this all goes, education and farms are gonna be an incredible network of uh that is coming. Homeschooling is expanding like crazy in this country right now. Farm homeschooling, all that stuff I think is coming and think about it, whatever. Thank you for consideration of the tax stuff. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Um, um, other people for Susan?
Hi, good evening, Susan Messino, forty-one Madison Lane. I'm here to support this. Um, I know many farmers in town who are gentlemen. I don't actually know any gentleman farmers in town, um, which I guess suggests a really wealthy person who's like maybe using this as a tax loophole. Um, I did wanna make a point and I don't think it's in the legislation that I wanna make sure that we're really focused on giving incentives to farmers that are local farmers that are providing stuff for our community. There's a big effort towards consolidation, commodification, homogenization, which is not the, it's not what we intend to give our tax incentives for. It's for for people who are providing so many benefits to the community, whether it's food or education or, you know, disaster relief and all kinds of things. So um on behalf of myself and be- on behalf of uh as Vice President of Simsbury Grange, number one ninety-seven, I'd like to really thank you for supporting our farmers and um for putting this forward. Thank you. And I know we have a pony thing and I and I'm not gonna stand up to speak again, but I would like a pony.
Oh? Yeah, over there.
It's still taxable, right?
Okay, um. Um, and um.
Lori Boyko.
Lori Boyko. Trying to keep track of everyone here. Lori, are you on my list?
No, I don't sign in. I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road and I am gonna say that I am not in favor of this, but before everybody groans, let me tell you why. I'm not in favor of this because I think everybody should be taxed equally and I don't think any of the businesses should be charged for their equipment, whether they have a CNC machine or a horse or a dairy machine or egg hatching machine or plows. I don't think any of it should be taxed. Yeah, we have a tax problem, we spend too much. And the way to incent people to do business in town is to not spend so much, so we're not charging them for things that people don't need, that aren't a part of what government should be charging for. I don't think Steve's oven should be charged. I think if, I I really don't think we should tax it all, but that's a whole other problem. But if you wanna charge tax, charge it on the buildings. Charge it on the buildings and divvy it up that way and be done. And stop slicing and dicing into every little avenue of everybody's life and picking on every little piece of equipment that they own and figuring out how to tax it. We humans ha- sure have a heck of a way of making things way more complicated for ourselves. So I'm not in favor of exceptions, I'm in favor of equal treatment without additional taxation.
Thank you. Okay, um, anyone else for public hearing number one? Farms machinery and buildings? Nope, okay. Um, that, I believe, since there's no other comments here, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the town code, chapter one forty-one, taxation related to farm machinery and farm building. Cause I'm a. All those in favor of closing that here, aye? Okay, we're all doing that. Do we have a sixth um person on Zoom tonight, Mark, do we know?
Joining later is what I can tell.
Okay, okay, thank you, I wasn't sure. Um, so public hearing number one is is done. So next, we're going to public hearing number two. Um, and just so you know, we'll we'll we will be voting on each item separately cause they are really separate items. Um, public hearing number two is regarding the exemption for, oh, I'm gonna open it, sorry. Summer's over and it's back to real work. Um, so this is a proposed hearing for um town charter one forty-one taxation related to exempting horses and separately a waiver of late filing penalties. So I'm going to move to open, or I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the town code, chapter one forty-one taxation related to exempting horses and also the waiver of late filing penalties. So is anyone here to speak to those?
Some of.
Oh, second, thank you. All those in favor say aye, aye. You know, now we could go. Things doing.
Don Teller, Tom Meadow Farm, um, two six one Farms Village Road. Um, I speak in support of this. Horses are as much a part of agriculture as dairy cattle, beef cattle, poultry. And so they've they've kind of had special status of or kind of not or they they were not treated the same way as other farm animals. So um, so I'd be supportive of of making this fix. And I did have the experience one time of um filing late or with money uh exemptions and uh and the the penalty is severe. It was very expensive. So I support any waiver that can be done, that's great. Thank you, appreciate it and appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, um, anyone else? Oh.
You just sit over there cause it's quicker. Okay. Lori Boyko, fifteen Oakhurst Road. I'm gonna tag on to what I said before, I don't think we should be taxing horses either. I don't have a horse, I can't afford a horse. I don't really love the idea that people can afford horses and I can't afford horses, but that doesn't mean that I think they should be taxed. But beyond that, there's a big problem with that is who's appra- appraising the horses? You can have a horse that's a quarter of a million dollars or a million dollars or five hundred dollars. So what, do we have an appraiser that's going out and deciding how much these horses are worth? And then do we have to pay for that too? And it goes along with all the equipment, who's appraising all the equipment? And if we're on the honor system, then the only people that benefit are the old, are the people that don't follow through honorably and submit the truth because we all know that there's people that follow the rules and people that don't follow the rules. So the people that follow the rules get taxed more and the people that don't follow the rules don't. That doesn't seem like such a great idea. And we don't really have a great way to hold anybody accountable for that. Nor do we really want everybody knocking down everybody's door to see what equipment they have inside or in their barn doors. So I don't think we should, I don't think we should have exemptions, but I don't think we should be taxing that kind of property at all. Thank you.
Okay. Um, public hearing number two, anybody else?
First selectman.
Um. Yes.
Selectman Getz is trying to get into the meeting and is having trouble, so Franklin can help.
Okay.
Um, I'm not seeing her, I sh- I I was able to email her.
Have to re- re- send one.
I haven't seen her log in, I'm gonna try, I could try to close the Zoom and try opening it again. I can try some technical troubleshooting.
Go ahead, go ahead and do that because you don't, you don't have anybody else on here that you can do.
Yeah, should just be.
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you.
So I'll just plug.
You made me lose my place.
Sorry, go ahead.
I have to close the public hearing, don't I?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
I'll move to, uh unless there's other comments, I'll move.
Yeah, so I said, I was trying, is anybody else? Yeah, so a motion to.
Second.
Um, all those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the second public hearing, public hearing number two, as it shall be called, is closed. Um, now we are getting to our public audience and I assume everybody else on this list is here for public audience. Um, so I will go back by this list and um this, now you have five minutes, um, unless we go over too long, what's, right, we have the estimate of, I don't wanna get into that right now, but the twenty minute estimate, we could reduce it to.
I'll then to, I'll offer public comment at the rest of the board, so as willing.
Say that again?
To go over the the limit if there are.
Oh, and stay at five minutes?
The rest of the board is willing. Right.
I I mean, I I think.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, eighty.
Is everybody gonna take five minutes? Okay.
Alright, cause otherwise it's an hour and twenty minutes, so.
Yeah, so and you'll all be here for that. Um, alright, so let's start the public audience and um I'm gonna just go back to the top of the list, which happens to be Joan Coe. Um, so. Let's have it. I I, before we start, I do wanna make a comment. Um, I c- I believe people are here for that open space item. Um, there, we are, we do have been our agenda to set a public hearing for that and we have met with the Open Space Commission and we are going to follow the procedures as as defined in the ordinance twenty-one point eight. Um, so if you're here to try to raise that as a concern, that is the process that we plan to follow and it's in our agenda for later on. So if you wanna express your support for that, but I'm just telling you, um, we do have that planned for later in that.
Could you just give the uh public the date of the proposed public hearing?
And I think it's.
First selectman, I think it's two weeks, it's not two weeks, it's been.
It's uh October sixteenth.
To give everyone ti- extra time to uh submit written comments as well if they want to.
Yeah, so the, so the public hearing will be on the sixteenth, just so you know. Okay, back to our um normal, okay, and we are, um, so public audience.
Reset the clock.
We, reset the clock, five minutes.
Okay, you're starting now, which sounds like way.
I'm not turning it to you now, go.
First elected Wendy McDeuce is does not respect the rule of law. First elected Wendy McDeuce is, as an elected official, has sworn that she would uphold the Constitution. First Amendment to the Constitution is freedom of speech, which has always been the pillar of democracy where people can express their opinions without being interrupted with derogatory comments in a public forum. Wendy's disdain for people expressing their opinions in a public forum was displayed at the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four Board of Selectment meeting, when she interrupted me during my public comments as I was explaining to the Board of Selectmen my concern about the ability of Deputy Town Manager Tom Fitzgerald to perform his duties. First elected Wendy McDeuce has interjected her concerns about an art exhibit at the Simsbury Public Library where the artist, with permission, placed her political artwork with political comments attached to each face on display. After reading the comments of the artist's uh display, first elected Wendy McDeuce was concerned that the comments created a hostile work environment. This fiasco led to the artist taking down the displays and removing the comments from each piece of work and then replaced the artwork on the wall. When Director of the Library Linda Miss- uh Misselli reviewed the display, she was not satisfied and she required more redactions. Once again, the artwork was taken down with additional redactions of remaining comments and then once again placed on the wall for display. Then the library board met to bless the fiasco. Artists are usually given much latitude to express their opinion in democratic democratic society without any interference. The art display in the public library was displayed in many public places without any interference. Why is Simsbury hostile to free expression? The town of Simsbury appears to have an issue with the freedom of expression and speech, which is used to intimidate the public. The town of Simsbury negotiated settlement of a nineteen ninety federal lawsuit on public audience was required by law to affix the settlement on the wall, which is supposed to be over here, of the main meeting room, readily available, observable by those entering the room, end quote. Recently, the settlement was removed from the wall. I questioned Town Manager Mark Nelson concerning the removal of the document that has been displayed since nineteen ninety. This resolution to the lawsuit mandates that all Board of Selectment meetings must have public audience and each person at least five minutes to express their views. Removal of the resolution to the wall is an affront to democracy and the rule of law. I would not back down on my request that the legal settlement be returned to the wall. Mark Nelson told me he removed it with the approval of Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo that this legal document can be removed defying the rule of law. How can Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo give a legal opinion that laws have limits and are optional if you disagree with the terms of the law? According to Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo, the rule of law is optional. How many laws should be passed out, should be phased out after years of enforcement under town attorney's opinions? At the discussion, as the discussion got heated, Town Manager Mark Nelson told me that he would be have to sue me in order to get at great expense of the taxpayer if he did not give, if I did not give him permission for the removal. I would not back down. Recently, I asked Town Manager Mark Nelson if he had filed an intent to sue. He said he is not going to sue, his failure of intimidation. Town Manager Mark Nelson would have to reopen the lawsuit and renegotiate the terms of the settlement all for a legal settlement affixed to the wall. The issue remains that the document is not on the wall and is a violation of law. At present time, we have a town manager and a town attorney that defies the rule of law. What is the Board of Selectmen's position on this debacle? Will the Board of Selectmen require Town Manager Mark Nelson to return the legal document once again to the wall? Recently, a Bridgeport Police Chief was denied ability to draw from his pension while serving as chief in the same department in violation of federal law. An October twenty-two amendment to the state statute which allowed the chief to collect the pension despite having returned to lead divorce was found to violate federal law. Does the legal decision apply to Chief Bolter? Where he retired and while receiving his salary, he is allowed to draw on his pension? All of my comments we posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you, all within five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Taylor?
Yes. Uh, my name is Steve Taylor, fifteen Harvest Hill Road. Um, this is my first time at a selectman board meeting. I moved here with my wife uh just a bit over a year ago, right? So and um where we moved from, I I had served as what we called a councilperson there. So I know you guys uh work hard. So thank you for your service and I can tell you, uh, I'm not interested in doing that here. I know, right? So the reason why I'm here is I read in Valley Press and and I must admit that I really don't know a lot about the issue, but I've been talking to some people, uh, uh, the the story about uh the selling of uh land, uh town-owned land. And uh I heard what was said that there will be a public hearing on that and I know that as a board you value public input, but I guess also appreciate uh being concise, so I'll try to be more of the latter. Um, I am here because I love Simsbury. I I mean, moved a thousand four hundred miles away from a region where uh taxes aren't as high, right? I mean, I'm just saying, uh, it bites a little bit more the taxation here. That said, I bring a lot of people here when they visit me and I say, look at this, you need to move here. I'm trying to get people to move here. Because of what it has, I say you get what you pay for, you really get what you pay for. I love this town and I think it's a good balance and uh you couldn't pay me to move out of here. That said, uh, I I like to say that when my wife and I were looking for a place to live in Connecticut, we visited fifty-seven towns. Uh, she is a doctor of sociology, she had a uh uh a chart of like ten dimensions of what the tick is to. And we visited public libraries, we looked at, you know, how 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 the city was managed, you know, a- all these types of things. Public space is an issue. Uh, I I know that this article suggested that there was somewhat of a test case terminology used, so all I'm saying is if this is in any way a test balloon, let's pop it. Uh, I don't like the idea of selling public land, I really don't. Uh, I I I think it's part of a master plan. Um, it's just a move in the wrong direction. What you guys have, and I will say what we have now since I've been here a year, is phenomenal. And uh I'm trying to sell as many people as I can on it. Uh, and I got my mom and dad here, so. We got two more taxpayers here, I'd like to get some more for you, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lisa Martino Taylor?
I'm the chart maker. Uh, yeah, I wanted also to talk about the open space. Um, when my husband and I moved here uh over a year ago, I did do a spreadsheet of fifty-seven towns and we ve- visited every one of those towns. Some rose to the top, we really loved uh places like Guilford and Weston and um Simsbury was up at the top of our list. And um we took about two years to explore where we wanted to live. It was a very deliberate decision. I'm originally from Connecticut, but I, we weren't sure where we wanted to land when we um came back. And so anyway, out of all of those towns, we chose Simsbury. And that should be a real vote of confidence to this town and the leadership of this town. Um, we chose it not for the schools because everyone says to us, oh, are you here for the schools? No, that that wasn't even on the spreadsheet. But what was on the spreadsheet was how um the political structure was, right? How was the town run, was it run really well? Um, what did it look like in terms of, was it vibrant but peaceful? And it was. And the open spaces are places of serenity and that was something that really sold us on this town. It's a really important element that makes it unique and s- and stands it apart from other places. And it was uh truly meaningful and continues to be truly meaningful to me that I can drive through and see all of these just wonderful untouched spaces in town, green spaces. Um, and yet the vibrancy is still here in town. Um, so um, you know, I think it's a a slippery slope. A test case is a slippery slope. And I think in this case, it's particularly a slippery slope for all sorts of development nightmares down the road, legal nightmares down the road, all kinds of things. So um I would say I'm I'm uh very opposed to selling any portion of open space in this town and I think it's, I think it's just a bad idea and I think it will change ultimately, it could change the dynamics of the town. Thank you.
Diane Nash is next.
Diane Nash, five Berrywood. Today, I emailed to the selectmen a letter questioning the process, price, and terms of the sale of Firetown, Rhode Island. The letter was also signed by eight other residents and written very shortly after the August twelfth meeting. There, we were shocked as residents that something was all of a sudden on the agenda and the Board of Selectmen seemed surprised that it was on the Board of Selectmen. So something, a lot has transpired since we wrote that letter and I felt compelled to send it because I had told people I would take their signatures and send it as well. Since we wrote that letter, our town management has decreed that this property is no longer open space. Funny, it's been built by public works when they mow it that it's open space. It's listed on Parks and Rec that it's open space. But now, because it is not designated, we don't call it open space. So therefore, we can violate the ordinance that we put in place years ago for a ordinary. for a ordinary good process. And even though we're talking about now adding it to the public hearing, it's a little bit like going through a stop sign, backing up, stopping at the stop sign after the accident occurred. So my main talk tonight is we've got to, I know this was a test case. Our town manager actually explained to you, this is a test case. Because I didn't want to have to go back to the board again for these decisions. I didn't want to have to go through. I've watched the tape four times at least. Steve was the only one who questioned. He said, but that isn't what this says. What you folks agreed to was, the first line was critical. If you approve this sale, you will send it to planning under eight twenty-four. Now, I don't expect you all to know what eight twenty-four is or read all the ordinance, but eight twenty-four sets, if it is sent to the planning commission and it gets a favorable approval, it's done. The sale is done. And Mark did put that in writing. It said, if it's a favorable approval, it will, you give power to the town managers to execute the document. You add it, it comes back to the board. What you didn't add was, it comes back to the board for final, not final adjustment approval to modify the terms. Maybe put an ordinance on it or something. But my question to you, I wrote to each one of you today, I think, have no idea how that, the way we have to prove we're not a robot, which tells me something about, I was born in the age of computers and now I gotta prove I'm not a robot is somewhat ridiculous. But anyway, the important thing tonight is now, is there a way the sale can be stopped?
Um, the time's up and I, I would like to.
Well, that's mostly you need to know, do you have the power to stop it? Or did we give that up on day twenty-four?
So I'm gonna just be out of line a bit here. At our open space meeting, you, you, you can sit down if you'd like, Diane. Um, at our open space meeting, um, where I do sit as the chair, we discussed this item. Um, and we are following the ordinance twenty-one dash eight, which explains the processing criteria for disposition of open space and land, which was presented by Susan. And it, we do send it to the planning commission for a referral. I don't believe anything binds us to the planning. According to the chair of the planning commission, it does not bind us to purchase the land. It comes back to this body to vote on the land. This is my understanding. And so what we are planning to do is schedule the public hearing, ask for referrals from the three committees that twenty-one dash eight, the ordinance that we discussed at Open Space asks for. And that it would all come back to the board where this body is able to decide if we want to sell that land, which would not happen till December, which is sixty days, which gives each of those boards sixty days to respond. So that's, I just want to check, Mark, is that the correct understanding?
Absolutely.
So we have a process of stopping the sale?
So, so the process will be with our board to vote on this in sixty days. That's the process. So we're, we're doing the process, we're following. Because of the discrepancy and whether or not this was open space or not, we are following the open space provision for the criteria for disposition of open space. And, and you're welcome to come to the public hearing in two weeks and, and review that again. And if there's any difference in the rules between now and then in four weeks. Um, so I'd like to call up, um, Dawn, are you coming back up?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Where's my pen? Um, I have Susan on here.
Good evening. Um, I am here for the open space issue. I did write a letter that was in the Valley Press, but before I talk about that, I always bring my Grangy stuff. And so first of all, I'd like to say that fair season is still on. Granby is having their fair this coming weekend, so is Wallingford and the East Hartford at Hillstown Grange. So I will leave these brochures on the table if Franklin will let me do that. It looks like there's a spot there if anyone's interested in the fairs. Um, I want to also say Simsbury Grange is giving out bungee cords for your trash if you have a bear issue, bear whistles, and this is a demonstration, horrible sounding, awful shaker jar. You can make it at home with coins and bears really hate these. So all of these things can help you if you have a bear problem. Um, I want to say about the open space issue, we did talk about it in open space. I think there's two things that are really critical. Um, number one, um, in terms of the public hearing, it's really important that people know how to submit comments and what the deadline is and all of that. Um, related to, I believe, the issue that Diane Nash is referring to, there are two actions of the planning commission that are binding. And it's eight twenty-four and subdivision stuff. And I only recently found this out. So that's why I think there is a question of whether, whether it's done. So which is why I'm suggesting that the way to, to handle this would be to sort of retract this and explicitly put this forward under twenty-one dash eight. Will we resolve that? Will affirm that we're using ordinance twenty-one dash eight and get this on the right track? If you're still in favor of considering disposition. And it's imperative that you call out twenty-one dash eight so that we know we're operating under this and not doing an ad hoc process that's, you know, under some other numbers or whatever. Because twenty-one dash eight is basically an umbrella process that the town did as a special ordinance to cover exactly this kind of situation. And the state statute is inside that process. So that'll give it the whole thing on the right track. Um, and then there'll be no question about what we're doing and why. And it will fix kind of the glitches that we've had so far. Um, also, I want to say that in terms of land use designations, I think this is where the confusion came in, deeded open space, designated open space. Simsbury has twenty-one land use designations. Five of them are town-owned, seven of them are open space, because we have the land trust, we have state land, et cetera. There's only one of the twenty-one land use designations that is town open space. And this ordinance only applies to that one designation. And this land is under that designation. And someone mentioned to me, we used to have all of our land maps up here on the wall, which were really informative. And, um, you know, I could point to it if it was still here. And I would say as a member of open space, we have a detailed disposition checklist that we will go over and try and get our comments and report available as soon as possible. Because I think the more information people have going into the public hearing, then they know what is this land? What kind of a tree is it? What, you know, what is this all about? So, I mean, I think it's a little bit backwards to have the public hearing before Culture, Parks and Rec and Conservation and Open Space are able to file a report. I know that's the plan. I know I can't, I'm, we're advisory, I can't tell anyone what to do. But we will try and provide our report as soon as possible using our disposition checklist. Thank you.
Okay, Helen?
Did you say Helen or Ellen?
Helen Peterson, I'm going by my list, sorry, Helen Peterson. Okay, you're next, Pete, Helen.
Good evening. Um, I am a member of the open space committee, but tonight I address you as an individual again. And I speak to your agenda item, selectman action item C. And I quote the first part. Um, schedule a public hearing pursuant to CGS seven dash one six three E regarding the proposed sale of town property located at the corner of Firetown Road and Owensbrook Boulevard and request recommendation from various committees and commissions, unquote. And more specifically, I will speak to the submission form that accompanies the item. I respectfully question why you are to consider a process unknown to us when the town has its own ordinance, as you know now, twenty-one dash eight, establishing the process. At your last meeting, you executed an eight twenty-four referral to the planning commission, asking for their opinion, and they responded with a positive referral. But I question that that was done before the public hearing. Further, in the summary, in the submission form on section five, um, first paragraph, again, I quote, prior to the Board of Selectmen considering the proposal, a number of steps must be taken, unquote. Again, I respectfully question why the Board of Selectmen was not informed by staff of the town ordinance twenty-one dash eight, an established document, and the process to be followed when a parcel of town-owned real estate is proposed to be sold. Further, in the second paragraph of section five of the submission form, it also states, and I quote, recently, the process commenced with the Board of Selectmen referring the matter to the planning commission for recommendation, unquote. But it failed to identify, it fails tonight in the submission form to identify that the process, to identify the process properly as the action that you took at the last meeting, as it was the eight twenty-four referral to the planning commission. Um, at our la, uh, meeting recently at the open space committee on September fourth, I, I welcomed the attendance of the town manager. And he specifically came to discuss with us this proposed sale. And I'm certain he is fully informed of the town's established ordinance eight dash, I mean, twenty-one dash eight as now. So as I said, I respectfully questioned the language of the submission as presented and asked that it be corrected for the record. And I reiterate that the town ordinance twenty-one eight, an established practice, receive your due diligence and that should be instructed by its process when proposing to sell any town-owned public land, real estate. So, I have one more question. Uh, this matter is very important to everyone and I strongly suggest that the public or even you um, review your last meeting on SCTV as well as watch the open space committee, that, a meeting that we held on September fourth, which is also on S, uh, SCTV. To fully understand this matter, and as people have commented, we should come prepared at a public hearing to understand how we speak. So, um, both me, both meetings are recorded and all of you can look at it, listen. Thank you and thank you for your service.
I have Kathy Martin-Loomis.
I'm recuperating from spine surgery, so I'm walking a little hesitantly. I'm Kathy Martin-Loomis and I'm a fifty-five-year resident of Simsbury. Under five hundred Firetown Road, I'm an retired attorney. And I saw the, um, I viewed the open space meeting of September fourth and I watched the entirety of that. And I saw the letter in the Valley Press written by Susan Lucino. And I became concerned for a variety of reasons. Um, Simsbury has two processes for the sale of land. And one is under the ordinance twenty-one eight that we've been referring to tonight. And, um, that section is followed in the event the Board of Selectmen proposes to sell open space land. And under that twenty-one eight, it directly involves input from the open space committee, Cultural, uh, Parks and Recreation and Conservation. They review and they report to the Board of Selectmen on any proposed sale or any other disposition of an interest in real estate. And if the open space committee or either of the two other commissions disapprove, then they record their reasons and send it to your body, the Board of Selectmen. And at that point, the Board of Selectmen sets up a hearing on eight, under eight twenty-four, the state statute. And they review by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that point. Now, under twenty-one eight, it's unique in that because it concerns open space only, it's required to consider items referenced in subsection one, and I've attached the statutes here in the ordinance. Um, subsection, subsection one through five. So twenty-one eight, see sections one through five, there are particular considerations that the open space committee must concern and evaluate before they send their decision or how, how they want to determine their disposition of the property. Those specific items that the open space committee is required to consider are not under any, are not included, excuse me, under the other process for the sale of public land, which is under section eight twenty-four. Under eight twenty-four, it goes straight from the Board of Selectmen to the, uh, to the planning commission. And there's none of those open space considerations that the planning commission is required to consider. And, um, that is unique between those two different statutes. So there's nothing in the planning commission, the referral directly to the planning commission under eight twenty-four, there's nothing there that requires the planning commission to consider those, uh, particular considerations, which one would expect to be considered when you're dealing with open space land. Uh, when I reviewed that.
Just so you know, you have less than a minute left. You have less than a minute left.
Okay. The points raised at the open space meeting, I heard Mark say that state law trumps ordinance. I respectfully disagree. If the ordinance conflicts with state law, then it does, um, then it, then it is trumped. But here, there's no conflict with twenty-one eight and eight twenty-four. Helen Peterson said that, uh, the town attorney sat with the planning commission and helped work out uh, the specific provisions of twenty-one eight. So it was, I heard a comment at the open space meeting that, um, that the town attorney, for some reason, didn't approve the process in this case. There was a plea to collaborate and negotiate with this process, to work together. It's good to collaborate. I worked as a collaborative attorney for years. It's good to work together, but you do so within the law. It's not appropriate to negotiate the process of how you're gonna change that process. You need to elect officials, you need to abide by the law. And the charter section fifty-two A one, the town manager's duties are to ensure.
Thank you, yeah, time's up, thank you.
That's, we have a lot of people.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate the handout.
Can I do for my time?
No, I'm sorry. Okay, I just, let's just move through the list. There's a lot of people waiting here.
We have a public hearing on this coming up.
Right.
Just so everyone does understand that, that is actually when most of this is really apropos.
Thank you. Um, Beatrice Rips.
But we can't do a public hearing. I'm sorry, but.
This isn't the public hearing, this is the public audience.
Our public audience, so.
Our public audience, so.
Yeah, we're, you're welcome to speak, we're just saying.
I never found twice the board of selectmen has fully challenged us from doing that.
Who, uh Beatrice?
Which I think is very inappropriate.
Um, hi.
Hi, Beatrice Fritz, wanted to make court. Um, so the first I've heard about all this was um Susan's article in. Um. I really would just like to say. Before this next public hearing that the public would have more information. Um, because it seems like there's some confusion as to whether this is really. If it's designated as open space, that it should be treated as such and go by the ordinances that are appropriate. Um. I will not be able to attend the October sixteenth meeting, I will be away. Uh, if I can get more information. And be able to do the research, then as with probably the rest of my town, um. Then I can write a letter or send an email. Um, but I, I think we should really consider. When we have open space to really protect that and not sell it because. And again, I don't know if we had the maps, maybe we could have a better idea. Um, where this property is and what it's adjacent to. So if it's a parcel that's connected to a privately owned um property. And they acquire this, this open space, now that's a bigger property. And how, how is that property zoned? If that owner then decides to sell that property. Well, depending on how it's zoned, we could have more things than we would maybe have anticipated, so. I think there's a lot to, to think about here and I. I don't think it's a good idea to give away any of our open space, so I just wanted to go on the record for saying that.
Thank you. Um, Carolyn.
I pass.
Thank you. Nevin, are you coming back up or Nevin's gone?
He actually left.
Um, Pat?
Um, are you on my time?
Scott and Deb Sanderson?
Pass.
Wait sixty.
Thank you. Um, Susan Messino, you're, you're done, you're on, you're on twice.
I'm sorry about that, maybe somebody signed me in, thank you.
Um, Ellen? Okay, Ellen Gilbert?
I pass.
R Porter?
I pass.
Lori Boyko?
How'd I get signed in?
Okay, I signed you in, oh, you're done, nevermind.
No, I'm not done.
This is not for our science, not a public hearing.
This is public audience part.
Right.
But we shouldn't do our public audience.
Can I do my public audience, I keep track of myself?
I'm Lori Boyko from fifteen O Cursed Road. Um, I'll be quick because I didn't really have time to review the hundred and seventeen page packet. Cause I, the met, the agenda was amended so many times, I couldn't find the whole packet until it was too late to redo. Um, I wanna touch on the open space issue. And I, I'll let the ladies that have already gone talking about the process and all that, let that stand. But here's what I wanna say as a resident about this is. I really think the public hearing should be after the land use meetings. So that members of the public who wish to evaluate other points of view before sharing their perspectives with the board of selectmen. May do so. I would think the board of selectmen would want anyone speaking at the public hearing to render their final thoughts on the matter. Excuse me, and not thoughts that might change after facts that are brought to the surface that people might not have considered. There are things that I hear at the other meetings that might actually change my mind from what I would stand and say before you in two weeks. And if that's the case and some facts are brought out that might actually get me to change my opinion, I would think you would wanna hear that and not my original thoughts. Um, like I said, I didn't really have time to review the packet fully. But there is some language in the packet and in tonight's agenda about adopting a capital region natural hazard mitigation and homeland security plans. I'm not positive, but it looks like the date to submit that from the town is not until nine thirty twenty four. So if there's time, I would ask the board of selectmen to maybe give a little bit of more time before you approve that. So that the residents can fully review those and share what they would like with you. It talks about the state of Connecticut providing financial and programmatic oversight based on the Capital Region Council of Governments program. Um, but the projects that we're oper- opting into there include. The Connecticut in uh counterintelligence center or intelligence center, a fusion center, a citizen corps, cybersecurity. It makes us eligible for regional grants, but it also says the town's required to maintain all insurance on the assets. It also says there's no guarantee of any monies for repairs. It refers to maintenance and repairs of the equipment by the town. And it requires the town to maintain trained personnel available to transport and supervise the use of that equipment. So in a cursory review, it looks like there are additional costs and or requirements that we might be. You know, required to uphold when we opt into those programs. And I think if, I don't know how much time you all have spent reviewing them, but. We certainly should have time to review what seems like a pretty big commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else here for public audience?
Uh, Dave Gold, forty one Madison Lane, yeah, we did used to have the land use boards here, I don't know if remember them, but. They got revised in twenty eighteen, maybe that's why they were taken down, but. They were put out by the uh, our engineering department. And you know, there is one designation on there, it's very clear, town open space. And this part, the parcel you're talking about, is labeled as town open space, just like Memorial Park is, just like Ethel Walker is, just like. All the twenty percent, you know, all the subdivisions that went in, where we got the twenty percent for the subdivision, that's all town open space. There's no question that this is town open space and that this process wasn't started correctly. I think we need to withdraw the process, start from beginning, start it over. Hold back that old, the, the original motion, right, that, that referred it to planning. And start the process the way it's supposed to go. I don't know why there's a rush to get this through, right, there's no rush. Let's take our time, do this right and follow twenty one eight, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public audience?
I wanted to submit this additional, I don't have copies that I hope that anything.
We can make copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, so I think we're done with public audience here. Um, I have a first selectman's report, which I am not gonna. No, I don't, public audience, not a hearing, thank you.
Sorry.
A little flustered. Um, so first selectman's report, um, one of the items I do want on, have on here, which I'm gonna repeat again, is the open space discussion and following the twenty one. Twenty eight as the procedure. A couple of things I will say before that, and I mentioned this also in open space. And we will discuss it as a board, but there's nothing in twenty one dash eight that says the order that has to be followed. It does not say the public hearing must precede the requests of the commissions. They are just listed in numbers, but it does not specifically say this has to happen first. So when we get to the agenda item, we can discuss that, but um some of the arguments made it sound like. This preceded this and it has to go in that order, that is not the case, the way that I've read the ordinance. Um, I do wanna welcome, we have a new officer downstairs, Jared Im- Imersian, who had a welcoming session this past week. Um, some of us participated in the encouraging words campaign, which I just saw video online from on the board of ed. And we met welcome students on the first day of school. Um, we went to the senior P D picnic last week, which was really nice, very well attended, uh, got to serve burgers and dogs and cheeseburgers with Curtis. Um, one thing I do wanna call out here, and I know that this will go out and I normally would just cut this off, but I'm trying to just. Kip back to a little normal attitude here. Um, the changes in the tax notices, I wanna thank um our first, or deputy first selectman, not a first selectman. Steve Antonio, um, the, the tax notices that go out, um, he made a recommended change that they appear friendlier. To a resident so that in the middle of July, it doesn't say it's your second notice, it'll now say it's a courtesy reminder. Um, our tax uh collector, Sherry, and, and our town manager have thought that those were good ideas and those will be implemented. The Simsbury Public Library is having their hundred and fiftieth anniversary party on October fifth, there'll be an ice cream social there, I will not be in attendance. I'll be in school, but I, um, we do have a member of the board of selectmen who will be going to that. I also included in here the dates for the Simsbury Housing Policy Advisory Committee because a resident has asked about those, those are open to the public, but there is no public audience. And the next meeting is on Wednesday. And then we have a bunch of grand openings today, we all, whoever wanted to participate got to test out Raising Canes, there's a big grand opening tomorrow morning, oopsie. Um, sorry, um, big grand opening tomorrow morning and um. Fun, they're really excited to come to Simsbury, it's only the second um place in Connecticut. And then we did, I did ask for a communication on the storm follow up, that is in the communications se- section of the packet. So if anybody wants to see um a summary of where we are and what's been done since then, it's in the packet under communications. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our town manager.
Thank you, first selectman, good evening, everybody, I, in, in view of the time and I, I will defer uh reading. My town manager's report, but it will be circulated uh through an email blast and on our website. Just wanna use a minute or two of my time uh to address a couple of things that are on the agenda tonight. Uh, first of all, the tax exemptions, we did just conclude uh two public hearings on uh four proposed amendments, two and two. Uh, just wanted to let the public know that staff's perspective of this was that it was good to present these options to the board of selectmen as a package. Uh, and we did our best to get them all done uh and in front of the board in a timely manner, but we missed one. Uh, which is the final one in the package and that will be a proposal to amend the senior and disabled exemption as well. You'll see on the agenda later, the board is being asked to uh set a public hearing on that one uh for later and that will complete the cycle. So just for the public's awareness, uh, our goal was to present all of these together because they all have a potential impact on our budget. Uh, an exemption unlike an abatement shifts the tax burden from one group to another, as a couple of the public commenters this evening correctly noted. Uh, and so it's really helpful and I'm, uh, for, as many of you know, former tax collector uh in Hartford, so taxes and exemption and assessment, something I'm pretty familiar with. Uh, and what we don't wanna do is, is every few months bring something forward. It's better to get them all as a package so that your electeds and the decision makers, policymakers can look at the impact of each of those uh taken as a whole. Uh, I was on a Zoom call with uh C C M Connecticut's Conference of Municipalities just today. Uh, and they recommended that we uh, that the communities look at these things systemically uh as a whole. So that's why we've got four of them, uh, would have been five if we'd been able to get that done. I wanna thank our assessor who is here, uh, Francine, uh, and also our tax collector. Uh, and finance director who worked hard on that along with my deputy Tom Fitzgerald. The grand list is certified, obviously, every grand list is October first. And that's also the sense of urgency here, uh, that we get all of these to the extent the board wants to approve one or more of them. Appreciate the comments too from the public regarding the farm exemption. Uh, we did not recommend to the board of selectmen to, to go to the max. Uh, we recommended a much more uh sort of basic uh middle of the road approach to this. Um, and for those who don't know, the state of Connecticut just made it possible relatively recently for us to exempt that. Finally, I'd say that, you know, none of us like taxes, but it's the state of Connecticut, not the town of Simsbury, that has the most to say about. Personal property and business taxes and so forth, and the only thing that this board can do, the only authority they have is to approve exemptions to that. And we're bringing them all forward for them to make that decision. And based on that, as one of our public commenters said, it then falls on the town manager's office with our finance team to present them with a budget next year. And that budget will indeed be based in part on what the decisions uh are made, as uh Ms. Co. alluded to. Uh, you have to make a cut somewhere, so uh we appreciate the board taking those up. Finally, with respect to the open space, I would just say apologies for this uh, for, for any confusion on this. As your new town manager, let's be clear about one thing, I agree with the public commenter that said there's no rush. And that's why when I spoke to the first selectman, I said, let's not do what we usually do, which is set the public hearing two weeks hence, let's set it a month hence. And give everybody the time they need. But the challenge also is, and working collaboratively with those committees, as we heard from Susan. We appreciate, I appreciate them taking this up rather quickly, uh, because processes in local government can take six months, nine months or a year. Uh, and we believe, I believe that we should take the time we need, uh, but not maybe nine months might be too much, so we appreciate that. Um, and lastly on that, I will say, I'm not saying there is a conflict between the local ordinance and the state law. Uh, but as your first selectman said, it is not clear which one goes first, it was never anything, it's, well, you've gotta go to open space before you go to the planning commission. And a lot of what we've heard since then is that you should have gone to open space first. Uh, I agree with our first selectman, there's nothing that requires us to go to any of these committees in any particular order. What I do concede is that whether it's in the ordinance or not, we should always ask for everybody's opinion. And we should always listen to everything that we can possibly tell, I think that's what your board is offering.
Thank you.
Okay, um, just gonna ask anybody if they have any um selectmen or subcommittee reports.
I have my liaison.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mine's short.
Um, I'll start with Curtis and then I'll go first.
Um, mine, uh, zoning, so these are more just updates, um, Wagner Ford property. Um, they got approval for demolition, um, but the one that they didn't get was the um forced right turn. So they were gonna make, the only way you could enter it, it was a right, but they said no to that, so there'll be a left and right turn entering that building. Uh, you mentioned Raising Canes, um, Ness Childcare is opening up, um, ISCC addition has begun, you started out work back there. Um, and then uh the new storage facility, so.
Okay, we can't mention that, you can't mention that.
I didn't mention anything, okay.
You're up.
I'm the liaison for E D C Economic Development Committee, Simsbury Main Street Partnership. And one other thing at the end, but I'll sort of roll the first two together, um. The Economic Development Committee officially welcomed Dill Dinkers Pickleball, which has free pickleball for all the public to try out this weekend at, I still call it Farmington Valley Mall. I don't even know what it's called otherwise. Uh, they heard a revised presentation from the Chamber of Commerce to assist them in community outreach to businesses. They voted to give it a positive referral to be presented to the board of selectmen in October. They saw a preview of an app the town manager's office is working on in its rough form of C Simsbury that was very promising. And they discussed Simsbury Main Street's proposal to bring wifi to the center of town, which was part of the memorandum of, of understanding between Main Street. And the board of, uh, the town of Simsbury. Um, the visitor's center has returned to the library as has tourism. Uh, find your space in Simsbury dot com, that's find your space in Simsbury dot com, this is a new resource that is up and live where property and business owners. Are encouraged to add their content and it's, you can shop around the opportunities for purchase or leasing properties in Simsbury. As well as actually there, there is the potential for businesses to be listed for seal. As Wendy mentioned, Raising Canes grand opening is tomorrow, the police are on it and it should go smoothly. We're excited about the five million dollar facility that Curtis acknowledged with Ness Schools down on the south end of town in Wheaton. Subway at Simsbury Town Shops is clu- closed due to medical issues by the current franchisee and that space is available. Rush Balls is relocating to Simsbury Town Shops in October from their current location. Kindred and Crew is moving to Simsbury Towns from the shops at Farmington Valley and Prime IV is opening at Simsbury Town Shops as well. There is some real estate in town that is interesting, the most uh unique one is the Cannon Building in front of Fitzgerald's is for sale for one point one million, anyone looking? Okay, uh, reminder, businesses and nonprofits can list their events. Um, for free at Simsburyevents dot com and business and property owners can also available, uh, that's a redundant thing on find your space in Simsbury dot com. Last but not least, there is a Simsbury Peace Coalition. A peace pole is a handcrafted monument that serves as a symbol of peace and international unity. A partnership of community support is formed and is now bringing this idea to completion. The pole will be erected and dedicated on the front lawn of the Simsbury Free Library, which of course everyone knows is not the same as the Simsbury Library. On Saturday, September twenty fourth, twenty first. Uh, all ID, all attendees can permanently add their fingerprint to the art which was created by local artisans between noon and one P M. And the actual dedication ceremony will. And the actual dedication ceremony will be from one to one thirty. And last but not least, with the Simsbury Peace Coalition, a coloring contest is now on at your favorite restaurants and features three prizes, a fifty dollar gift certificate, so check in with your local eateries if you would like to enter or have children that would like to enter the coloring contest.
Start to enjoy doing that, aren't you?
Got my.
Okay, Diana.
That was pretty good.
Um a couple things. So uh SIMPAC, they are having their next act unveiling on uh the nineteenth, September nineteen. Um Board of Ed, they had a successful back-to-school uh opening and and were um, I know many people, I was away, but I know we they you uh attended the first day of school um programming and and just be careful as people are out there driving, buses uh will ca- cause some interest cre- increased traffic in the morning, and beware of walkers that are going to school. Uh Fair Rent Commission, we did have a hearing that was sent for formal complaint, but the Fair Rent uh hearing was canceled because the two parties decided to try to mediate instead. Uh if the mediation is not successful, then Fair Rent Commission will be having our first hearing. Um the Culture Parks and Rec uh End of Summer Bash was extremely successful. They're happy to report, especially due to nicer weather and not as many rainy weekends this year. They had a much more successful summer with camps, pool attendance, golf uh uh golf um outings, and the new sign at the entrance to Simsbury Farms. Um they're they're very pleased with that. Uh the Aging and Disability Commission, um we had several uh uh successful event this past summer for the disability community. Uh we are having uh Super Thirties, Super Thursdays starting again and Oc- on October tenth, Thursday, October tenth. Uh we will be having the Luncheon and Fashion Show. Um the luncheon starts at eleven A M. And then the fashion show will uh take place afterwards at Enema Mario Hall. You're all welcome to come, it is a very fun event. Board of Selectmen are please welcome to join us, and if you'd like to model, please do so. It is a super, super, super fun event. Uh and then on public safety, uh there are new markers on the road at the crosswalk at Henry James. Um we're very pleased to see those. Thank you for Public Works, for painting the road to make sure that that crosswalk um and walkers at Henry James stay safe.
Kevin, you're you gotta show this off now.
I'll keep it short. I'll say uh uh the End of Summer Bash was was great. Thank you to the First Selectman for inviting me to speak in her place and with Tom uh Tom Burski, I think it was a great family fun event and a great way to end um that season there. Uh during uh the summer, we heard a public comment on um the POW flag and asking that for unofficial events, and so September eleventh is coming up this week and and uh Town Manager may have a plan for for finding the flag in front of a a Town Hall for that. Great, thank you all for me.
Okay, guess we get into the real story here. Um so we normally have a consent agenda and and um there's not a law on this agenda that I'm gonna motion to move to the consent agenda. Um I did have a question on tax pa- overpayments, which we usually do, but I I did.
I can answer whenever you ask.
Okay, um the other items that I was going to suggest moving was the supplemental appropriation for the roof replacement, because that's already gone through the Board of Finance and all the information is in our packet, so that would be item D. And then um I was going to recommend items J and J, but um just because it sounded like they were fairly cut and dry and giving us access to potential funds. And I'm open to discussion on those. And then um the under the appointments and resignations, the resignations um to the various boards and commissions, but we do have a question on the up new appointment, so we're gonna bring that up um later. Um so anybody, yeah.
Uh just administration has no uh objection if you wanted, if the Board wanted to table J. According to public comment, there's not a delay on the uh authorizing me to enter into the arrangement.
Yeah, 'cause I had a, I was gonna ask a question.
So we would like to uh ask the Board to table that.
Okay.
For the September twenty-third meeting, uh would be fine with us.
And we're gonna table.
So I'm making a motion to modify the agenda for uh items I and J uh for future meeting.
Oh, I too.
Why does it say I?
Yeah, he said just just J.
What are we talking about?
J.
J is the Homeland Security Grant.
I don't think.
Is the the M O A.
Uh it's it's part of the Capital Region, it's a long memorandum, and there's no urgency to approve it, it uh seems for.
It's I, it's I, the um Capital Region Natural Hazard Irrigation Plan.
Irrigation Plan and Climate Change Update.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, that one, and the one that J is separate, that's that's what we always do every year, the Homeland Security Grant.
Good.
Thank you, I stand corrected.
Okay, so I is the one that you're tabling. Okay, so before we, let's get the consent agenda. Let's move, uh we're gonna, Kevin, you said to table.
It's a motion that wasn't seconded though.
Right, so.
Well, wait, can you, can I make a, I wanna make a friendly amendment?
Once it's seconded, but go ahead.
Okay.
Second, uh second, second.
'Cause I wanna make a friendly amendment to add item K to table.
Okay.
If you're tabling, I might as well jump on that, right?
Yes, yeah, I I agree with that. I, J, and K. We were modifying the agenda to table those items, so that's the motion.
Okay. Yeah, so so, wait, not J.
I think. J, J is fine, right?
J is a stand.
I is the one with the the two hundred page plan that we want more time, that's not time-sensitive.
It was I.
And then J is is a Homeland Security memorandum of agreement we do um continuously. Uh J is all good, correct?
I.
The commentary at the public comment, which is what the Town Manager referred to, um also referred to that, and if there's not a sense of urgency prior to our next meeting in September, I am okay with tabling that, and so that's why I made that motion.
Okay, the comments were directed at both of those?
No objection.
Okay, so. I, J, K is on the table to vote?
I, J, and K. To vote on tabling.
To table.
To tabling, got it. So all those in favor of voting to table those, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Got it? We don't have a sixth person yet, do we?
Okay.
Technical problem, let's forget it, sorry about that.
Okay, well, I'm sure that doesn't matter. Okay, so I, J, and K. Um so I was, okay, so let's go.
So did you move D into consent agenda, or does it matter?
D and A.
Oh, yeah, t- no, I'm not moving A. Oh, D and A from appointments and resignations.
From appointments and resignations.
So I'd I'd ask if we can move those to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Or second?
All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Kevin, you with us?
Uh uh yes, uh.
I just wanna make sure.
I'm just making notes, the the A on the appointments is resignations, and so we're accepting those.
Correct.
Yes, yes, that's all, we got that one. Okay, so the first item is the uh the normal authorization of tax payments, and I had a question, and it turns out that um uh uh another member of the Board had the same question. So I will let that other member of the Board ask that question. Kevin?
Uh uh so if we're on on that item, um there were a couple on there that um were pre- in previous uh list years, but not in this one, and so I was just wondering um if there was a special circumstance regarding um the home goods um tax exemptions, why it's previous years but not not this year.
Well, they're gone.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just wondering why it's not on this year's and.
N- nothing special about that one. Uh we did get some further information on the other one. Uh were you asking about that as well, or just Wendy?
I'm asking about thirty-four, and I think Ke- Kevin was gonna too.
Yes.
So on that one, which was, I believe, the hundred thousand.
Yeah.
The answer from the tax collector today uh was that this was a actually a duplicate payment. It was not a uh what's called a certificate of correction that was the result of a tax appeal or anything. Just a, as I understand it, the escrow paid it, and then the taxpayer paid it, so we have just have a, that amount is going back.
Okay, those are just process questions, I'm sure it was all upboard. Thank you.
Okay, but.
What was the home goods answer, though? Why they're not on this year? If they're going for twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Right.
That may have been a tax appeal, because they only appealed certain years. I'll check on that for you.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you.
Nothing I've heard uh isn't concerned about approving this.
Yeah.
Okay, so the the next item is to schedule a public hearing for proposed amendments to the Town Charter Code um related to providing the tax credit for elderly and disabled homeowners. And this has been discussed for the last, at least the last year, um since our interim was here. Um it's been brought up by members of the Board of Finance, and this Board have raised this question. And um attached is, um Mark, I'll let you explain the the um proposed um attachment.
Uh can I go on? Can I make a motion to uh approve item A, authorize it refunded or two ways?
A vote, so, yeah.
Oh, oh, thank.
Second.
Oh, if in favor, say aye.
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 Not on, not on my game tonight, I guess. I get a little thrown here.
Let's make it fast.
Um, okay. Thanks for, thanks for having my back.
We're good, thank you, thank you, First Selectman. So this one, I'll be very brief. It is a uh, as we mentioned in my comments earlier, a proposal to uh i- amend your local ordinance to exempt and actually amend the thresholds uh uh under which, the income thresholds under which our senior citizens uh receive the tax benefit. So this amendment is doing two things. It is uh right-sizing the income levels to match what the state of Connecticut has done. Uh and it is slightly increasing the credit as well, that has not been done uh in some time. Uh and you have uh in your packets the proposal, uh which has also been posted for public review. Uh we are only asking that the Board set the public hearing, uh not obviously act on the proposal, but uh with the Board's uh support, we hear from the public on this uh on September sixteenth. I did indicate that we would, uh if if there is likelihood for approval that it uh happened before October first uh from a time uh time perspective, but and I'll take whatever questions you.
I have some non-substantive uh uh recommendations for for changes, if I can make them, unless you want the motion first.
Yeah.
Uh in in the document, it references the previous sections, and it's just an opportunity to update the language where it says the applicant or his spouse, and there's other places in the document where it refers to um their spouses. So if we could just modify the language where it references that kind of thing and just um make it clear throughout, I recommend that we go with it there.
I I agree.
So bring it up to twenty twenty-four?
Well, it's just, I think it'd be more consistent for the documents.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So there's several places I can provide them, or we just accept that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I just don't, I don't think you need a motion, but yes, absolutely, we'll make them.
Yeah, you got it. I'll I'll just say as um as recommended, um does anybody have any any questions? I mean, we're, it's going to a public hearing, so we'll hear from the public. We'll be able to weigh in at that point. Um so I think it's, I don't like, let's put it out there.
Yeah, I I have one other one. In in the uh in section where it says dash thirty, um there's uh item C number one, where it says after filing a false affidavit, I would recommend that we add the word knowingly presenting false information.
You got that?
Subsection one?
Yeah.
Yep, got it.
And then in the final one, uh in dash thirty-two, where it says continuation of existing town benefit, I don't think it's relevant anymore, we can strike the entire section. So section one four one dash three two says continuation of existing benefits. It's related to the passage of the original ordinance, and so it refers to the tax year beginning July one, two thousand and six. I think that we've, you know, almost twenty years away, we can delete the paragraph.
I'll check with the town attorney. I would've done that as well, but I it occurred to me that there could still be taxpayers that are paying, if you if you were paying, my understanding.
That's a good thought, I hadn't considered that.
So they might not, this this requires them to file every year. We have our assessor here, every two years, so correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there could be taxpayers that predate the nineteen ninety, so. I mean, I'll check with the tax.
If it if if it's necessary to keep it in, I have no objection, obviously. It just seemed um out of date.
Yep, I.
Right, I would, the only question to that would then be understanding that uh there may be taxpayers uh prior to nineteen ninety and prior to this, but it the then the second part of that, the last uh after the comment, shall continue to qualify without reapplying for the tax year beginning July one, two thousand and seven. Does that need to be updated?
No, they would continue to. My my read of this is is that they would continue without having to reapply.
Right, I understand that without having to reapply, but do does the tax year beginning July one need to continue to stay in there? Or would it be without being uh shall continue to qualify without uh reapplying for subsequent tax years?
I wouldn't wanna amend it because it might imply to the readers that that we just changed it to say twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Uh that was an original, I don't see any need necessarily to change it, but we'll check with the town.
Okay, I would just, like you have a virtual language from the beginning.
Yeah, yes.
And I I did have a question. Um I think I asked it already, and you can answer it in public, but my question was why are the limits in a, for going based on the state limits, why are the limits the same for an individual um versus a married couple, in that the income level is the same for both, whereas sometimes the income level for the individual has dropped to less than what a married couple's income could be? I was just curious, I'm not gonna.
I'm gonna refer that one to our town assessor, 'cause that's a great question.
Yeah, so so the state level, they look at single individuals and married couples, all right? They are, the levels are different. Simsbury had, when they adopted this, this, they didn't look at, it didn't matter if you were single or married. So we do have several individuals that qualify for this program, and if you were to amend that and follow the guidelines with the state, some singles would no longer be eligible for it, the program, so.
Okay.
It's a good question.
Very, okay.
Well, so if somebody brings it up in public, I can hear, so be it. I just, this was just bothering me, but thank you for the explanation. Um so I am gonna ask for a motion effective September ninth twenty-four to schedule a public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to Town Code Charter one forty-one, Article eight, tax credit for elderly and totally disabled homeowners for six P M on Monday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second, um and with the, what we published in the.
Oh, with the changes.
Yeah, what we published will be what we discuss.
Yes, all right, I meant to say that too. Um all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um so now we come to the topic of conversation. And I please ask the audience to not weigh in on this, okay? This is for the Board to discuss. Um we've heard from everybody's opinion um and thoughts. Um I've shared my thoughts on this. Um I uh to me, open space, the I I I will just defer to the Town Manager in that they were looking at the legal definition of these parcels, and the legal definition did not match the dated open space parcel. But in the in the grand scheme of things, it is considered open space. It is on our open space inventory that was put together, not officially, but it's put together in twenty fifteen by Conservation Commission and the Open Space Commission. So twen- so in 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 that regard, I've, we should respect the open space and follow twenty-one dash eight ordinance on the disposal of the property. The questions that have come up tonight are, did going to planning, did for the eight twenty-four referral, which is under twenty-one dash eight, did that supersede what we're doing under twenty-one dash eight? That's a question I don't know the answer to. According to the ordinance, it doesn't say that it matters. Um but I don't know other than that if there is any legal constraint that it did go to planning first, because they only addressed it as eight dash twenty-four. Um the other question I have is um the the scheduling of the public hearing, and I did like something that I heard tonight that, you know, might be advantageous for the public hearing to have heard from the other commissions before they weighed in. That was a very good point that somebody made in the audience. Um so I'm not sure, I'm gonna ask you guys to weigh in on what you think, um whether we postpone the public hearing, do we schedule the public hearing and take it all? Um and for, you know, pu- and allow public audience to weigh in when we have all the pieces together, which would be in December technically. Um so at this place, I need some collaboration.
So if we schedule a public hearing, are we, would we schedule it far enough out that it would be post? Like, we don't have to schedule a public hearing in two weeks or four weeks, we can schedule a public hearing for.
Sixty days of December would be our, would be right before our December ninth meeting, which is when I was thinking we would have all the information from the public hearing, from open space, from conservation, from Parks and Rec, to come to this Board to make a decision.
So we can, so we can post it that far out, is my question.
Well, we could, or we could just wait and post, wait, just take no action, clarify the the order legal, which I I don't believe there is a issue there, um and then just revisit it. I I would defer to our Town Manager here.
So one of the, one of the most important things I think about setting the public hearing is is that you get, it it allows us to put the required notice on the property as well, which we intend to do, and we can't do that until we know when it is, so I would prefer you set it now, even if you're gonna postpone it longer. I think as I indicated, there's, there is, and the public commenter was correct, there's not any rush. This is more about, you know, figuring out the right process, and and I think we're we're getting there. So I'm happy to move it further than October sixteenth, but would ask the Board to set it, so that everybody knows that's when the public hearing is.
My other uh question is, because there has been brought into question, and you uh sort of brought it up yourself right now, was um with um twenty-one dash eight. Um knowing that we sent it to planning, which was operating under, now the numbers get confusing, twenty eight.
Look, planning doesn't care about twenty one dash eight though. That's the um and I went to the planning meeting and there was no mention of twenty one dash eight.
Twenty one, yeah. Right.
They were instructed to only um pay attention to twenty, the the state reg, that they don't pay attention to those ordinances. I don't know if that's stated correctly, so I don't think it done before or after, I'm not sure planning would have cared if we were doing it under twenty one dash eight. Because to them, it's just the the referral.
It's just, right, but.
Eight eight dash twenty four, it's just the referral to planning.
Okay.
So I I think that's what I'm trying to say is there's no chicken before the egg here as far as we can tell from the ordinance. Um um so I I. That's that's what I'm saying.
So we don't need to necessarily backtrack and restart the process?
Go back. I I I don't think so.
If 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 I may, also for select, and if you wanted to, you could set the public hearing for the sixteenth, just not close.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not uncommon at all for boards to not close the public hearing. If what you hear from the public convinces you that you need more time, then you then you hold the public hearing open.
True.
And I think that might be a better solution because you're getting into the holidays as you get closer to Thanksgiving. People may not be able to make one date.
Mm.
This may be something where you actually wanna hold a public hearing on October sixteen and keep it open for the purposes of letting as many people as possible come and speak.
Multiple days.
I think that's a pretty good idea.
How are we gonna handle just to be, it's a poor shadow. There's gonna be a ton of people that want to speak. We're we're here, we're limited to forty nine people, I think.
And we can set it at three minutes.
Well, we would have to, but that's my point is let's be.
Oh, it is three minutes.
Well, I would I would just offer, um I and I I think thinking out loud, uh I would I would offer that setting the public hearing also allows us to advertise this, get the blast out. As I know our friends will uh in the audience as well. Maybe the comments come in writing as well and and maybe if you've got that much advance notice, you don't have two hundred people at the meeting because they've submitted their written comments. So and I think for that reason, I would schedule it for October sixteenth and and be prepared to keep it open longer if you need to.
And the only commission that's left to weigh in is zoning or?
Not three commissions.
Not commissions, committee committees.
Or it is the space.
No, they didn't formally write, the the open space is not responded formally cuz they have to meet to do that.
Oh, okay.
Um con- conservation is not going to Conservation Commission and it is not going to Parks and Rec. Um and Parks and Rec is the actually the maintainer of this property, so all three of those boards will have to to weigh in.
So when would that be completed, just discussionary?
Up to sixty days. They have sixty days according to the ordinance, so it could be up till December, early December.
I think I just wanna make sure that we're all clear, because I do think that it's a bit m- m- muddied. In that I understand that there's not necessarily a set formulaic process of it has to go to this commission, then this commission and before this board. But according to the ordinance, a- and I wanna make sure we did the process. And we're not stuck in something that ultimately the after public hearing and everything, the final uh approval for the sale of the property lies.
With this board.
Within this board. And we're not stuck on something that moved forward in a way that should not have happened.
Yeah, yeah, and that was the question I you confirmed that age eight dash twenty four, the plan and the planning commissioner also. Stated this in the open space meeting, that does not constitute that we have to sell the property.
Correct.
So so I think someone said that today and that was we it we were told that is not true. That it's up to this board to approve on selling the property.
If someone would.
So I I I'm sorry, I I'm sorry, okay.
You interrupted me, so I'm allowed to talk.
Well, this, I'm not asking for pu- public weigh in on this topic. I.
I I'm asking a question.
I I've asked that the board, it's up to the board, Diane, and I'm very sorry to have to say that, but the it's a discussion among the board right now. Um and we're we're referring to our professional here to get the answers and we're all weighing in, so. Um I'd just like to know if anybody else has any uh thoughts on this and moving forward or not moving forward.
I do wanna address that. If we do do it on October sixteenth and move forward as we've discussed. We will still be able to get written input right up until the day we vote. So in a perfect world, I'd rather push it out till everyone has weighed in in case it does spawn an idea in any resident's mind. But there is a venue for that to be conveyed to us. It's just not a public hearing, it's just an email. And also um just to bring it up, there's always public audience at every board of select one meeting, so you're not limited. Um so I am of the persuasion, I think that's the wrong use of the word, but anyways.
Yeah.
Of um just moving forward with October sixteenth, if there's anyone else that would like to weigh in with their.
Knowing that we could continue the public hearing as well.
Well, I I'm gonna. I I'm I'm gonna put the motion out. I'm gonna put the motion out here.
So I I if I could comment too, so uh so we've been talking a lot about process and I agree the process is important to follow.
Sure.
I'm worried about as well, once we dispose of the property, one of the concerns on the maintenance of open spaces, what gets put there. It's non buildable now.
Yeah.
Um if it gets combined, you know, as a lot, is it treated um at all the same? Is there an opportunity for this board to predict um, you know, that part of that parcel in a covenant on the transfer of the property? Um that maintains it as non buildable. Uh those are some questions that I have that I don't think are answered either, that I think could um accomplish the same thing uh that we hope to do. It looks like Mark has maybe an answer ready.
And that's a great, great point.
Not to not to belabor the point, but the absence of that in the existing deed goes to my point about whether or not it was open space. But you're exactly right, and the answer is yes, because as we said, this board has the ultimate authority.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And whatever conditions of sale you put on it are what will be there.
So in in my mind, I think that there's a way that we can accomplish this. We need to follow the law, of course. Um we can still get the same information that we would get through the twenty one dash eight process through an ex post facto review from these boards and commissions. Um I think in order to do that process though, if we need to go twenty one eight, we have to withdraw um the previous approval that we gave and then start the process back over again. I don't know that we can just do it um necessarily here and and one, that's a concern. Um it was mine.
That was mine.
And then if we do transfer the property, I've actually had some disagreements about this with some people, I've said. Uh because part of the opportunity in um addressing these orphan parcels is that it gives an opportunity for different kind of development. Um I I find it valuable to consider putting covenants on these properties. It's I can see a value of having a larger yard for a property owner. And especially if there's a lower price being put on it and you can't put a shed or a garage on it, um that would impact, you know, the value as well. So I think that that accomplishes what most people in this town are interested in protecting our open space, but also addressing the orphan parcels that exist.
So it's too bad George isn't here, because I would ask if we have to undo the twenty four dash eight vote by the planning commission.
Well, that's well, I could answer it this way, even though I'm not a lawyer. You don't have to undo it in order to set a public hearing. And and you'll notice that the motion before you was to set the public hearing and refer it to the other committees, which so. Regardless of the answer to the question, that's the appropriate action, but we will refer the question to the town attorney and we'll get back to you on that. Again, as I understand the question, is there any need to repeal your referral?
Yeah.
You've got a a recommendation, it's an advisory opinion. I I won't speak for the town attorney, we'll ask that question. But I respectfully ask that we set the public hearing and start the process for the public's awareness of when they can submit their comments or when they can come and speak.
When we set the public hearing, we'll be able to, will we be able to put these property maps and photos and some other things? I think that, not to diminish the the circumstance, but I do think some of the concern is that people are picturing metal wood when we're talking about selling open space versus this parcel. And I think that, you know, all of them are obviously important, but I think that the context, we heard from uh some folks in public comments tonight, people are rightfully concerned, but mostly due to a lack of information. So I don't actually know that we're gonna get a huge attendance at these public hearings. I think people are gonna be concerned, but I think a lot of the reaction we're getting is because of a dirge of information, not or a dearth of it, not because they have a lot.
It's a good point.
It's so, just to split this out one more time. If we vote, I I am going to include reference to twenty one dash point eight in my motion here, which triggers the those things. I guess it sounds like if we find out there is some sort of legal thing with eight dash twenty four, at that point, we could pull it back if we had to, because. Right, so, okay.
Yeah, sure.
So I'm gonna make ask for a motion effective September ninth, twenty twenty four to schedule a public hearing pursuant to C G S seven dash one sixty three E. And I'm also gonna include twenty one dash eight regarding the proposed sale of town owned property located at the corner of Firetown and Owens Brook Boulevard. And per ordinance twenty one dash eight, refer the proposal to Culture Parks and Recreation. Conservation Commission and Open Space Committee for their recommendations for a six P M public hearing on Wednesday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
So just so that I understand, sorry, I think it's important cuz a lot of folks are 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 interested. Uh this motion um isn't related to the disposition of the property. It's actually, it is, it's just scheduling the hearing. It's not, it's not opening up a twenty one dash eight process. It's just scheduling the hearing, even though you're referring to it.
I I'm also refers, I am opening twenty one dash eight because I'm asking for referrals to those three miss boards and I'm treating it as open space. And twenty one dash eight is the process for the sale of an open space piece of land.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that you you're mentioning it in your motion and I'm happy to uh vote in favor of it, but I don't think that it starts that process. I think it just schedules. Uh the hearing and refers to that as a process that you're wanting to follow, but it doesn't.
Well, I don't even know what starts that process other than referring to it. I guess that's the question. So regardless, stated, it's in the motion.
You have to, you have to actually want to sell the property under the ordinance twenty one dash eight.
Okay.
So but we've already done that under eight twenty four.
Okay.
So but I'm willing to vote for this motion because I think it starts the other pieces and.
Gets up a public hearing.
Um I think it's gonna add clarity to the process. It's also why I'm willing to uh to do this. We're gonna get more input and not less.
Okay, that sounds great. So did I had a motion in the second, all those in favor say aye, aye. Okay, thank you.
I can vote, it's moving in second.
Aye.
Okay, sorry, where's my sheet? Um schedule a little bit probably again. Okay, you skip that. Okay, now we're getting to the horses. So now we go, um. Do you have a horse? No. Oh, yeah, what's that from? Um well, how about the Seinfeld pony?
Right.
I had a pony.
You had a pony.
Um, okay, so item E is um. Now that we've closed the public hearing, to enact the municipal option to exempt horses and ponies from property taxes ordinance Town Code. Chapter one forty one, Article nine. Um and we can take action on this ordinance, we can table this ordinance, we've already closed the public hearing. So o- opening this for discussion and Francine is here to address any questions that we might have on the purpose of this.
Um. Um talking to the town manager, um this is about two two thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that we have, that we do have the skill to measure what horse is worth more than other horses. Um so I I I mean through com- through comment, but I'm on this for this.
Okay.
I actually have a different vantage point, because now that I've seen our financial situation as a town, we're not in going out of business or anything, but. We don't have minded to to follow every cause and it's yet another subtraction. And we're in a precarious situation right now that we don't wanna keep raising prices, taxes, prices, same thing. And if we keep cutting little nickels and dimes, they're gonna have to be made up. I know it's only two thousand dollars, but then everybody's kicking in seventy five cents or whatever per per household. So I I understand and I'd love to just clean this up and be done with it, but I think we're putting too much effort into cutting our revenue. When no, to my knowledge, maybe I'm missing something. Nobody has asked for this. So am I missing that or?
And and Francine, well Francine, I'm gonna give the floor to Francine and then.
Well, Francine doesn't pay taxes.
I know, would like to.
I'm sure she does pay taxes.
Well, I just wanna say this was added at the request of um our town staff to put this on, wherever it goes, it goes. But Francine is here, our assessor, and I'd like to give her an opportunity to weigh in.
So look at it this way too. So the state now has modified, starting with twenty four grand list, the way that we value motor vehicles, right? They have exempted utility trailers. We're no longer gonna be assessing utility trailers. It's just a lot of work and a lot of trying to gather that data and so on. They're exempting snowmobiles. There there's a bunch of things that they're exempting, a brand new way of valuing motor vehicles to simplify the process. So this is another one of those items. It's just, it's a bold statute that's out there. That, you know, they leave it up to the towns to adopt an ordinance that you can waive, you can, you know, exempt horses. So right now, the first thousand dollars in assessment valuation is exempt, okay? So if you have a horse, Stephen, and you declare it, okay? So let's say you say it's worth five thousand dollars, all right? Your first thousand dollars will be exempted. By statute, we have to. However, a farm who has horses, okay? They can be totally exempted. They just have to file that application. And as long as they are horses that are being used on the farm, they're working horses, they get exempted. However, as a an individual who has a horse or a pony, those are not. So it's up to the property owner to declare those and it's up to the assessor to assess them. So I just brought it up because there's a lot of towns out there that have adopted it over the years. And I just felt that this was a good time to present this and offer this as, you know, um an exemption, okay?
So my question has always been regarding this, and I'll bring it up again, is that I, you know. And and I I I don't know how to cl- clarify it though, is you have some horses as part of farms in a agricultural type environment. But then you have horse farms that exist as a business. And they have several horses and and that is their business and a taxable entity. And that's my concern is, you know, you you're gonna exempt and so you're gonna now exempt all of those versus the 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 farmer who may need. Do you know what I'm?
Yeah, but.
But we're covering a lot of different things and perhaps in all honesty is that I need to address what you just mentioned. Okay, the business that actually has horses, it's not just an individual who has a horse for their daughter or son or whatever, you know? Um because everybody needs to declare, all right? So I can, if, you know, the board perhaps wants to table this and I will get further clarification on it. I can definitely do that.
One of the issues that came up was the difficulty in in assessing the actual value and that whole process.
Yes.
Is it reasonable to consider some sort of a um a standard assessment for all individual horses? And then that takes out the estimation of of setting the value. We just established them that if they're 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 living.
Yeah.
Um and they're there, then they're taxable at this amount.
And they're over a thousand dollars.
Or or whatever that might be. I don't know if that's possible.
I typically take the declaration that the individual who owns that horse. Because they have to state what the valuation is, what type of horse it is and what the value is. I typically accept that as what they're giving to me. And like any other property, you know, then it's up to that point where if we decided to audit anything like that, then, you know, we would. Do evaluation, but.
I guess what I was wondering is if on average, people are paying a hundred bucks for their horse, uh that we just set and assess, you know, that your your horse registration fee is a hundred bucks.
That was Curtis's idea.
Sorry, Curtis, it's a great idea.
A horse license.
But it but it then you have to implement a whole system to.
I don't, I don't think that I could just opine, I don't believe that that's permissible under the framework.
It's like dog licensing.
Of this state enabling legislation about assessment, the whole point of assessment is that you assess it on an individual basis, so. You know, Curtis, your idea of a flat, I mean, makes sense, because what we're really weighing into Stephen, to your point. If there's two thousand dollars coming in as revenue, which I think was the estimate, right, Francine, two thousand? The question is not just that, it's it's are we doing, is it costing the town more? If you add the work that needs to be done and you factor all of that in, it's not worth the effort for that two thousand, right? That's just not a big enough number to warrant the need to assess and 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 enforce, more importantly. The failure of a number of people who own horses to declare them, because that's really what we're talking about. So if somebody declares it and they and they file it as they should, that's generating two thousand dollars. The issue is all the ones that are may may not. that's generating two thousand dollars. The issue is all the ones that are may may not be filing and the work it would take to enforce that. Do we as a town want to chase horses? I mean, I I can think of another way to to put it, so.
Yeah. So let me, can I just ask this before I lose this? So I know it's a small amount and the two thousand is reflective of the app people out there that are filing for their horses. The people that aren't filing for their horses. I I guess I I don't see any change in 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 exempting it or not exempting it cause the same people will file for their horses and the people that aren't filing their horses now, we're probably not gonna go after them anyway. So taking away the law is just saying you don't have to, nobody has to declare it. That that's how I've been interpreting this. Um it's like, okay, the good people reporting it, other people aren't reporting it, so nobody has to report it. And I think that that to me, this is kind of not the right message um for for the rule followers um would be how I would say it.
So Wendy, my my reaction was sort of the opposite too. If we if we aren't aggressive in pursuing those who aren't paying their taxes or we don't have a way of doing that, that is a return on investment, we're penalizing those who are following the law and and allowing a process and a piece in place where we can't enforce the law. And that's just worse than having the law. Uh we should ensure that we have laws that can be enforced.
But we have, I hate to say, but there are there are laws that we don't en, I mean, I'm not gonna say what they all are that we don't enforce
Yeah, probably not.
Well, not to not to not to not to draw too too fine a point.
For the minutes.
Cause it's too much resources.
But Salkman Beal is correct about this. I think when you're talking about taxes, particularly taxes, it is imperative that we are equitable. And when we are unable to enforce and go chasing all the horses by doing nothing, we are perpetuating the unfairness of we've got a handful of people that are self-reporting. And I think to to your point, I think I firmly believe a- a- again, as a former tax collector, the most important thing is that we treat everybody the same and when government fails to do that, we've gotta correct it. The and unfortunately, the only way I can see to correct it is to uh say to the handful of people who are reporting, you no longer need to report. That's the right thing to do and staff recommends approval.
I I'm still of my curmudgeon stamp. And I think I would totally accept this if you came to me finding me two thousand dollars that you're gonna replace it with. Otherwise, we're stirring the poop and if I'm not mistaken, nobody other than Francine trying to do right by what's right has asked for this exception exemption. So I mean, we're stirring the poop to try and give away two thousand dollars and we're like putting effort in here and time and I don't understand unless there's some other way, we're gonna be bringing in money. I think our efforts are being misled that it should at least have a way to bring in additional funding. And from that, I I'm done arguing cause it's such an insignificant figure.
Okay, yeah, and here's what I'm gonna do. Since we've already had a public hearing and we've closed the public hearing, I'm gonna ask for a motion effective September ninth to enact the proposed ordinance of town code chapter one forty one article nine, municipal option to exempt horses and ponies from property taxes as presented, which shall be effective with the twenty twenty four grand list twenty one days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury, further move to authorize a summary of the amended ordinance be published.
So you made that motion or reminded?
I I asked for the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody second that motion?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's two. Um and all those again say nay? Nay, three. Okay, so the motion fails.
Nay.
Okay?
Sorry.
That's well Francine still gotta stick around.
Francine doesn't care.
She's doing it. Yeah, you're usually here. Wait, Francine is usually here in her office working on a Monday night.
No, she cares. I didn't mean to imply that. Not anymore.
She's like, duh.
Okay, so the next item is the farm machinery item. I like that they're broken down one at a time. Um so we've already had the public hearing, we've closed the public hearing. Um the recommendation of the town is to increase the the pro the machinery to a hundred. Oh, we already have the one hundred in the section A in the in the law. We're asking to take the state's recommend option to add a second hundred thousand dollars in the machinery um for that, for for the farm farmers. So I if there's any any conversation on this, um I do have a conversation piece basically on this and the other one I won't get to is um the concern is how do we validate values of the machinery, the exemptions that we're giving um that they're actually used for agricultural use and not for other thing, that they meet the fifteen thousand dollar limits and things like that. Like do we do due diligence and the, okay, that's what I wanna.
Yes. Yes, so there's a process. So and only actual true farmers farming, you know, um are able to apply for that. If there's an application, they file their personal property declarations every year and then they get an application for uh equipment that can be exempted and they have to list it, okay? And there is, yes, there is an application every year and it's not a gentleman's farm. It's actually active farm that is entitled to that if they qualify.
And it's under state statute, right? That's what governs it, not our own process.
Yes. Yes.
Do we ever go with them?
Yeah, we're we're yeah, we're just enacting the second part of the state statute.
It's just.
That's an option to municipalities.
Exactly, to increase the exemption. So the state required a hundred thousand, which we are are required to provide if the farmer, you know, is eligible for it. And now the town can adopt to increase that exemption. And that's what's been presented.
Okay, um Cur- Curtis, you have a question.
I was gonna, um do we ever visit? I know before public comments mentioned that no one actually goes to visit the farm so that um there's no real way to know the use case of the machinery. Um do we do we visit the farm every to?
Well, not every farm every year, no, but we randomly do. Like any other business, we would audit, you know, go and visit the property and verify what they have for equipment, what their decla- what they are declaring, that is truly what they have. So, yes.
Okay, any uh any other questions? Um, okay, um I'm gonna ask for a motion effective September ninth, twenty twenty four to enact a proposed ordinance of town code chapter one forty one article ten, property tax exemption for farm machinery as presented, which shall be effective with the twenty twenty four grand list twenty one days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury, further move to authorize a summary of the amended ordinance be published and the ordinance is included.
Under the motion.
Okay, second. Any further discussion?
There was discussion about increasing it to the maximum and I think we heard comment that uh this was a good step in the right direction and so I'm happy with the.
Um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Um so that's that one. The next one is on the buildings used for farms. Um so this one is another one um that fa- is as allows the town to, oh this was in, this is, yeah, allows the town to exempt um s- amount for buildings on property. Again, the question that I ask is are these buildings, barns, whatever, do we validate that they're used for agricultural use um and not for other things or to store other things?
Okay, so currently we do not have any exemptions for the buildings.
Okay.
The state, unlike the manu- the um um equipment that they have, buildings are not by state. That is a town ordinance to be passed.
Okay.
So we do not. So I will, if this is passed, I will be visiting every single farm that is requesting this and verify those buildings. I will, I will need to.
So
根 by every building.
So I'm gonna just say we were talking about trying to alleviate the amount of work on the assessor before for the horses and this sounds like this will put
Well, you voted against it, Wendy.
I did, what I'm saying, when we were
But she did it two thousand.
On the, on the and the assessor.
It's the only way because on.
But but this has a bigger impact because it impacts all of our farmers, not people who own horses, so.
I think that leads to the equity issue as well, so I think it's great that she does her job with diligence.
Right.
Yep, so um I'm gonna ask for a motion effective September ninth, twenty twenty four to enact the proposed ordinance of town code chart chapter one forty one article eleven, property tax exemption for buildings used in farming as presented, which shall be effective with the twenty twenty four grand list twenty one days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury and further move to authorize a summary of the amended ordinance be published.
So moved.
Second.
Um any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so get out there and start checking those buildings.
Thank you.
Okay, um the next item is um the waiver one, geez, this is the tricky one. Francine, you're still here for this one.
Yes, that one seems to need a lot of clarification, so I'm here for questions.
Yeah, I have a lot, I have a lot of questions. So this one is to enact a waiver of penalty provisions for income and expense reports ordinance. Um there's a new town, uh chapter one forty one article twelve. Um do you wanna give us the background and the why and and then we could ask questions?
Like I don't know if it was included uh my memo clarifying what it is. Um so the income and expense report, um the assessor may require it to be filed on an annual basis. Okay, we do require them to be filed a year or two before revaluation. Um but a lot of towns and I opted to require, you know, starting this past year, but they file them on an annual basis. So what we want, we want the data. We're not out looking to penalize these um rental properties. It's the properties that are, you know, producing income, they're mainly there to produce an income um on rentals. So wh- what I'm looking, and the town has the ability to pass a waiver if, for instance, the property owner files it, but files it just one day late, I have to penalize them. By statute, ten percent of the assessment, an increase of ten percent, that's the penalty, okay? Just one day. Again, we don't wanna penalize them, we just want the data, okay? So so this by passing this would provide, you know, give them a little bit of time. Yes, they can request for an extension to file, but they have to file that request by June first. So if someone, something happens and they didn't request an extension, they don't even get the extension. I can't give them a thirty day extension by statute. So they'll get penalized. Um this does not give me the ability to say, okay, eh I I'm not gonna penalize you. I didn't get everything I needed, but yeah, you're okay. Um you, you're, you know, a couple of days like up to say, no, you're you're okay. Um you you didn't file everything that you needed. Yeah, I could just, you know, waive you. That's not what it's meant for, okay? So if someone provides the information required um within the timeline that I'm mentioning in there, you know, let's say by September thirtieth, that I would, as long as the information is provided and, you know, my statute, the way it is required, that we can waive them. We would give them a waiver of that penalty.
So would that waiver? I'm probably the one again.
No, I got a question to them.
Has nothing to do with business personal property.
No, i- it's this, right?
Okay. It's the income exactly.
I'm familiar with them, Francis. Um so June first is when they're due, so September thirtieth. It's still, is there a way to reflect, if someone's like a day short, which I'll be frank, some constituents have complained to me because they got hit with the penalty, which is your day late, it's ten percent, which is stiff to say the me- the least. However, I would want to be commensurate where there also isn't like there would be a different penalty, if you will, for someone that filed on June third than there was for someone that filed on September twenty ninth.
There is no recourse for that. No, it's either yes or no. There is no, you can't make an adjustment out of penalty.
So you have, so you can either forgive it in its entirety, the penalty or not?
Exactly, by passing this, that would allow me to waive a penalty if the taxpayer filed within the the timeline that we adopt, okay? Um that would allow me to waive that.
But that would be a, it wouldn't be automatic. That would be at your discretion, correct?
Well, at the discretion, at my discretion, yes, if it's filed in its entirety.
Right, I agree with that. Just the the four months seems like quite an envelope for a opportunity.
I it also, look at it this way. So let's say someone files, but it's not complete, it's missing data.
Okay.
It gives them the option to amend and file a complete report by that date. I pick that date because then ten one is your next grand list. We we can't just say, you know, forever, so we gotta pick a date. I I opted to say nine thirty would be a good timeline to give someone the some properties are more complicated than others in filing these reports. So that gives them the ability to contact their accountant, you know, if they need to find another accountant or whatever the case may be, so.
I just um I I have to be frank, it it's due June first and while as I um definitely of the perspective that ten percent for a day late is not fair to bring it there. Um giving them four months is also, I mean, it's only so complex and as a property owner, we know this is coming. I- it's not like, oh my God, look at what I got today. It's a a natural thing and to be frank, all of us have computer programs that follow everything and we transcribe numbers. It's not like you're coming into this with, I've never seen this form. So I'm a strong proponent of this, albeit I think the envelope is a little large for reality. It's a third of a year is the the envelope. So um so that's my two cents. I'll sit back.
I there could be, there could be different reasons, you know, it could be medical, it could be whatever the case may be. I I'm just the ones I looked at, they kinda like usually it's by season, so.
I've still supported if we go for four months.
But let's just bring it in.
You could you could amend. I was just gonna say the board can amend it.
Yeah.
So my my request on amending it is actually to have it be the Board of Assessment Appeals that makes the decision.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is these uh nuances or differences or somebody who's perpetually late to put that all on, even though it would be more efficient for you, I think that actually puts too much on uh town staff and having a duly elected body uh review the situation and make the assessment and also the person who was late, you know, to have to make their case and go through that process in a public way as well.
I like that.
Because that's also at a meeting where it can be reviewed. So that's my recommendation if we do this is to um strike the assessor only and make it only the um assessment appeals.
Can you, can you re- okay, so you would only allow the board to waive the penalty?
Yeah, with a with a vote. And and they could do that and I imagine that could be just like you would be able to to do. It's it's within that process and that period and um if they had already, uh uh anyway, I think that it allows the the flexibility that we're seeking but also the clarity in the process and takes out the um potential for it being subjective versus rather versus subject.
Kevin, will this be for every, like if I'm a day late, I have to go to the board?
Yeah, if you want, if you want, if you wanna waive the penalty.
Otherwise, you got a ten percent penalty.
Not that big a deal. They have plenty, they have plenty of meetings. They have plenty of meetings and if you wanna save the ten percent and you're the one who was late and you could have a bona fide medical issue and you don't even have to be president at the meeting, but that would be.
But it isn't a, a like, as long as you're you're complete within thirty days. So you you may not be sick or anything, you may just have missed the date, something happened, some your information came in late.
Yeah.
But every case you, you for like one day late, you'd wanna have go?
No, 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 I think that there's a penalty now and there's no exemption. I think this is a great idea to get the exemption. I just think that the the body that does it should be um, you know, an elected body as opposed to an individual, especially it's one staff person. I think that that's a lot of burden to to take on on waiving a significant penalty like this because of all the nuances that we discussed, that if somebody had a medical issue or they hate paying taxes and they were making a protest or whatever those are, I think a duly elected body. And then also if we if we as a as a population decide that um it's uh uh too um too aggressive that we're uh assessing these penalties or too lenient, then the voters get a chance to put those um members of the Board of Assessment Appeals in the future. So I think that that makes it a democratic process, is the process.
Point five A.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So the board, the Board of Assessment Appeals is there to appeal what the tat- what the assessor does, right?
Okay.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
So so but they are in there because if they were after a certain timeframe, they could go to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Uh of course, the board at that point would have to deny it if it's not within the timeline. Keep in mind Keep in mind that the Board of Assessment Appeals does not meet until March or April. This penalty would get added, okay, to the July, so if it's due June first of twenty-four, it would get added to their July bill that goes out, tax bill that goes out. Okay? The ass, the Board of Assessment Appeals does not have the um, they're not there to review all the information that's on that report, like is it, you know, is everything being reported at the way it should be? I'm just putting that out there. Um, so for the Board of Selectment to opt to strike out the assessor and only allow the Board of Assessment Appeals to waive a penalty on this, I
It's like having two strikes, honestly. You go up to Francine, if you're unhappy with the assessor, then you appeal.
But I don't think the board would ever go back and reassess the penalty, right? Well, so say she waves it, the Board of Assessment Appeals isn't gonna go back and add that penalty back in.
Why would they hear it if they weren't appealing her decision?
That's exactly my point, is I I think that that giving the elected board the ability to waive or decline to waive is the power that I would like to give the Board of Assessment Appeals.
S- so let me tap in on that because I had the problem kind of, I I didn't understand the or the assessor or the Board of Assessment Appeals and I felt like it made it very discretionary. And and so if you're trying to explain that, I still don't kinda comprehend that. Does it go to you first and you make, if if it's late?
So yes, so if it's late.
No.
Are you, are you talking about if this was not adopted or this is adopted, okay?
If this is adopted, I guess I don't know anymore. If this is adopted, is presented, yeah.
As presented.
So keep in mind too that there is another process, the town has a, has auditors, right?
Mm-hmm.
Finance, everything gets audited, they pull out stuff. So if I were to waive a penalty for someone who shouldn't have been allowed a waiver, I would get, you know,
Sure.
it's on me because I'm not allowed to do that, just like I can't exempt someone, you know, just like the tax collector cannot waive, you know, pass through interest on someone. That that all gets audited and so.
So I I I uh trust you implicitly and explicitly in the whole process and I won't um I'll ever learn as much as you've forgotten about uh taxing and assessing. I guess my concern is, just like this board has to uh vote to accept the tax refunds, there's an elected process here, that's that additional step of of review, even though it's recommended by staff. And and for me, it seems um a a better uh process that that board, even if it only meets in those other times, I think that them scheduling a meeting when there's an application isn't out of this world uh to review it and there's probably gonna be more than one at a certain time of the year. So um it's meeting schedule, um the fact that they're duly elected uh and it's an exemption to something that's a penalty that's to encourage people to participate. I'm just having difficulty understanding, well, who's the one that we're denying the exemption to, right? Who's the one that we're, we're saying, no, you are such a a delinquent participant, so who is that person? And I would want an elected board to be the one to make the decision, not just you.
If I, if I may, per selectmen.
Oh, sure.
There's another, another side of this coin, which I think we're just about to get to and that is, is that I think Francine is alluding to this, but and correct me if I'm wrong. But the penalty is only waived if it, if if the documentation is given. So back up a minute, at the, at this point in time, it's not being given. The penalty is enacted and be- because it is a deterrent to people not filing at all. If somebody comes in and files a day or two late, it's a de minimis thing that in my view shouldn't necessarily need escalation to the Board of Assessment Appeals. What I'd be more comfortable with is if the board, to to Stephen's point, is uncomfortable with the four months, then maybe make it sixty days or ninety days or tighten that window a little bit. The other thing I'd offer is a compromise is, you know, we could pass this as a pilot and ask the assessor to to document uh each case and I as town manager would be happy to present it to the board annually. Well, what uh what were the penalties that were waived? In other words, make that reporting requirement to hopefully satisfy uh the Selectment Beals comment about the need for oversight by electeds, which I think is a valid point. I just think that you're here every month and I think the Board of Assessment Appeals doesn't meet quite as frequently as people think they do. Um, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna exclude the assessor from the process. What I would suggest we do is narrow the window. Uh if the board, if you're so inclined, as hopefully you are, that that this is really a deterrent to not filing.
I just, I, for me, and I I think it's actually the point, it just seems like they could schedule a meeting at seven P M on 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 the last day um and vote on the applications that came in with all the information. It just seems like we would have that information, it's just one extra meeting, it's not several. Um, I don't know, I am having, I I wanna support this process, I think it's actually good that we're establishing the waiver, it ju, I feel much more comfortable with it. On um being a vote of multiple people, an elected board and um and I hope that it doesn't cause too much of an administrative burden separating it out that way. I just think that it's gonna be a lot cleaner in the end when there's another complaint, but I I don't, so.
So right, yeah, so keep in mind that they all, they would only meet once a year, it's in March or April when they
Except now.
They go through this. The board, no, the Board of Assessment Appeals.
And you're the liaison too.
Well, yeah, I'll talk with Sean, great.
Board of Assessment Appeals, yeah.
Not president.
I think there's also one last thing I'll say and I I don't wanna belabor this either, but if you change the process, then we also have on the administrative side a need to educate the public about what you've done. And and I'm just thinking, it, cause this is new to me, how do we educate the public that, hey, if you're late, you can go and get, are we incenting more people to be late now because we've gotta put it out there what the process is? It's not that complicated, if somebody comes in a little late, the Franc- Francine says, look, if you get it to me by such and such a date, you're good.
If I have to go in and I have to say, please, I just, I, it's so silly or whatever to one person versus going in front of a group of people, I think I'm gonna try to be on time.
I agree with you, I don't, I'm not sure how we publicize.
So I don't think that it's, and and I, what's the volume that we're talking about with numbers of people as far as educating a population? You're probably late once, I think we heard from Mister Teller that he was late and I think he learned. So I think that it's not like a huge population of people, I'm just wondering what it is.
Surprised.
Okay. Am I talk, am I like hundreds or tens?
Am I gonna use my dot here?
Forty.
Dozens.
Can I ask this again? There's a couple things. So the, it says, it says the financial impact on this.
Mm-hmm.
But the question, isn't, isn't it just a del, oh, so the the financial impact is the late fee?
Yes.
But we ultimately will get the money from the person, so it's really a, a yeah, I, I'm sorry, I was just thinking it was, so the late fee is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, but we're still getting, the people are filing their forms whether they're late or not and we're getting whatever we get from that. That was just somewhere that got messed up in my head. And then the other question I have is, s- this is, so if if somebody's late, right? So to, let's say me and Steve are both late.
No, 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 let's say you and Curtis are late, I am on time.
Me and Curtis are late, me and Curtis are late. We both come to the assessor and we're late.
Mm-hmm.
And he gets an exemption from the late fee and I don't.
Right.
How, that's where the B O A A would come in.
I agree.
Because that's where the discretionary comes in, why did he get it and not me? And that's where I think you open yourself in the town up to an issue.
I
Right?
Because I'm, if you're late, yeah, they'll be penalized and by nothing this, it, they would have to, in your words, they would have to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals to get it waived.
But the waiver is 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 not guaranteed, right? We're reading, the waiver is not guaranteed.
It's only if someone files late um files an incomplete report and then finally files the completed report by a certain date, okay? Um, anybody else, you know, if it's not filed according to statute the way it's supposed to, they're penalized. It's, there is no waiver.
Okay, so there's standards for the not applying the late fee that has to happen.
Mm.
There's a process. Okay.
I'm
So it's like checkboxes, like
Yeah, re re, regurgitating this all in in my head.
The financial impact's only a hundred and twenty-three thousand, cause we're still taxing the horses.
Okay.
I I still feel it should go to Francine though, because the appeals board is to appeal a decision. If there's no decision to appeal before.
Can't appeal it.
So what is the, so let's go back to this again, why is the Board of Assessment Appeals even mentioned here? If if you're really the person making the decision?
Cause Curtis cut the, cut it and you didn't.
Everything, everything, everything must go through the board also, meaning, I mean, that's the way the statute is written.
Okay.
Okay, that allows the assessor and or the board, so.
The appeal will only be if she denies.
Last year.
Okay.
Right.
There won't be any review for somebody getting the appeal.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the reason why I was hoping for it to be a judicial process of a board making decisions.
You have, there's a, yes. Exactly.
Would Mark's idea of an annual report to us satisfying?
I think, I think it's all gonna be public record regardless, it'll all be public record, so I don't have an issue with.
Well, the only thing that's not public is the report itself, it's not a wire.
Well, right, right, but but what's happening, the dollars and all that.
Yes.
I was just offering if there, there's any sense of trepidation on the board members that you're delegating some discretion to the assessor, we would report on her activities.
I actually am interested in protecting the assessor uh from having to make a decision that
Yeah, but that's
that the board should have to have.
So not to say it, but Board of Assessment Appeals, I I used to be on a nomination committee for, doesn't matter which party. And that was one of the hardest ones for us to populate was for, it's not like people are knocking on the door like, put me on Assessment Appeal so people yell at me. That's a, it it just, I, if we add to the burden of that board substantially, I think it's more of a deterrent against the few people we have even expressing an interest.
Okay, so let let's get, let's circle back, let's say we're okay with the people, right? Um, are we looking to change, is there d- conversation here to change the, there is the, how many days, the June first?
Four months, two, three.
I'm happy with the term, I don't think there's any reason to shorten it.
I'm happy with Kevin.
Okay, all right, all right, so let's get going here. Um, I'm looking for a motion effective September ninth, don't laugh at me.
I'm not, I'm laughing at Curtis that I haven't got that exemption and you didn't.
To enact, to enact the proposed ordinance of town code charter one forty-one article twelve waiver of penalty provisions for income and expense reports as presented, which shall be effective with the twenty twenty-four grand list twenty-one days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsbury. Further move to authorize a summary of the amended ordinance be published.
So moved.
I'll second it and I'd like to ask that we amend and remove the assessor so that it reads the Board of Assessment Appeals shall have the authority.
You don't have to accept that if you want the assessor in there, correct?
It's all on you, I think.
Because we just discussed why the assessor had to be in there, didn't we?
It's all on you, cause you moved it.
Yes. I do not accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so
So I'll make a motion.
Well, apparently you have a motion on the table.
I know, I'm making a motion to the motion that's on the table and I'll ask to remove it, if there's no second, then that fails.
What?
Uh, look, can, I'm, I I have the floor, right, and I want to continue with the motion that's on the floor.
Right. Right, and in that motion, I am now making a motion to make an amendment. It's kind of
But how, I didn't recognize you.
He is able to do that, unless, unless somebody calls the question, which is, I I don't think we're there yet, but
And then like, because it's a question.
I was gonna call the question on the motion.
Well, he, he's, he's made the motion before he did that, but
I think, I think in fairness and running the meeting, so is there a second to my motion? I think there's probably
Right.
There's no, there's no second.
Okay, so that's fine.
Okay, so is my motion, is our, this motion still out there?
His motion failed.
And yours is law.
Okay, so all those in favor.
But the minutes, the minutes need to show that.
All those in favor of the original motion before the amendments and the second motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so that passed.
Was that affirmative, Selectmen Beal?
I voted for it, yes.
Yes.
Okay, good try.
No, thank you.
I think that was all.
Well, I'm Cherry, I take a, uh
So
I think we're done. Oh, no, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Time, let me excuse first moment, thank you.
Okay.
It's only five hours.
Come Francine.
Oh, are we taking, wait, I gotta ask for a motion to take a rest?
Well, she can leave the meeting if you wanna proceed.
She can leave.
Okay.
No, we just won't vote.
But am I gonna wait for?
No.
Bye Francine.
Okay, so, all right.
It's five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Francine, it's a relief for you.
Thank you Francine, thank you very much.
And my, um, my income will be in September twenty, I'm just kidding, just a joke, bad joke, bad joke.
All right.
I'll make an appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals.
No, it's not till twenty-five, it's every other year you do this.
Okay, so now I'm moving on to appointments and resignations, I believe.
Sure.
Okay. We already did the resignations.
Yeah, we, um
Oh, no, the appointments.
Right.
I just read resignations from, for the fun of it. Um, so we have a, uh, we have a few, um, we have a few appointments here. I do wanna raise a question on one of the appointments, um, and um, M- Mark had also weighed in on this. Um, it's um, to the appointment of Susan Ray to the Library Board of Trustees. We wanted to get confirmation that there's no policy or issues um in in putting up a long-term employee on a board and commission that supports that department. So I'm asking to table um that appointment till we can get clarification on that.
I got confused by support, the table and
So like I'm 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 ta, I'm asking to table to
Take time.
The motions.
Yeah, I need, I'm asking for a motion to table on the appointment of Susan Ray based on what I said as a regular member to the Library Board of Trustees.
So, second.
Okay.
I see no reason to table this, uh Susan's been a long-term volunteer uh for town, but if we're, I need to table it, I understand.
Okay, and Mark.
It's still a possibility if I'm understanding this right, and we're just waiting for a question.
Yeah, we're just gonna, yeah, we're gonna get, um, Mark said he was gonna look into it, he had asked if we could just make sure on that there were some questions on that, so all those in favor say it.
Motion to table till when?
Oh, to to table to the, no, the 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 nine twenty-three meeting, okay?
The next schedule.
Next one.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll wait till nine twenty-three, um, if we approve it.
To me, Diana.
No, we have
I don't know, Steve, I don't know.
I don't think, I think we have a quorum here.
Kevin, do it, there's no horns.
We have a quorum, so all those in favor of tabling it say aye, aye, all those opposed.
No.
Okay.
Oh.
And Diana is, oh, so she's uh not here, so
Oh, just
Three to, three to, three to one.
Oh, that's enough, oh, yeah.
There was a question about one of those problems.
Yeah, we have a question you missed it, we're
And we're just waiting for the answer, so it's next meet.
Yeah, so we ta, we're, we're, we've
I don't know.
Tagged.
Till next meeting, cause we, we had some questions.
Wait. Sorry, who's the library meeting? Any questions?
I am.
Kevin.
Just wanted to know, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna read these all together if that's okay, the remaining motions. But didn't we used to be able to just say, make all the motions as written? I'll, I'll read them all. Um, so move effective September ninth twenty twenty-four to appoint Cherry Chester Anderson as a regular member of the D E I council. Move effective September ninth to appoint Cassie Taylor as a regular member of the D E I council, wow. Move effective September ninth twenty-two to appoint Sadie Conway as a regular member of the D E I council. Move effective September ninth to appoint Valerie Finney as a regular member of aging and disability. Move effective September ninth to appoint Jim, James Trafficante as a regular member of the police commission.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Um, then the the, oh, the meeting minutes, I have some, I I'm gonna make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August twelfth twenty twenty-four special meeting.
So moved.
Ask for a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye, uh aye.
Aye.
Um, a motion, ask for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August twelfth, the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, I have discussion. Um, so here's my discussion. Um, first of all, the meetings started late, it did not start at six P M because we were in executive session which ended at six ten. So that's one of the, the issues.
What was your amendment, I apologize?
I'm, the me, the start time of the meeting was not six P M.
Start time.
Okay, thank you.
Um, there was a typo, um, the value of state assistance in clear-up work was about a hundred thousand dollars, I think that should have said cleanup work. Um, I actually believe I said, um, as in the minutes, it says shared that four hundred and thirty properties were impacted by downed trees and twenty cars. I did say that four hundred and thirty properties were impacted with thirty homes and twenty cars. Um, the other point that I wanted to point out in that same section um was that what is, it says they could help them with after the storm and that is when the crews were sent for three days. I I think it should be clarified to say the D O T crews were sent for three days because I, it wasn't our crews and it's misleading. I'm pretty sure I, I read what I wrote or said on my notes. Um, the other thing was, it also said they also did open the landfill and accepted debris, the town opened the landfill. It just made it sound like the state opened the landfill. And I also said power was restored and no one was seriously injured and power was restored. And I also said, just saying this because I saw their people's things, they're all in there, I thanked our state legislative and federal partners for help during this disaster. So I wanted those I wanted those reflected in the minutes. Um and the other thing that I I wanted called out was uh the presentation that Mark McGregor made on the few points, gave a lot of detail on his points, but I I think it should be in the minutes that we've, we referred this, we suggested or I re-suggested, but I believe the board agreed to refer um the discussion to this shep- shepact which we are actually doing. Those are my changes. So anybody have any other thing before we vote?
No, but I commend you on your thoroughness.
I was, I had it. So all all those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Okay. I did it last week, that's fine. Um so with that, I think I can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Friendly amendment to stay for another hour?
Only if I drink more water and have to excuse myself again.
I'm just in favor.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you over staying.
Sorry.
Thanks for staying, everybody.
I was like, it hurt. I'm like, if I don't.